Senators on the line, so I'm gonna get us started. I'm gonna ask the Commission Administrator Cody Barnes to call roll for us, please.
Certainly. Okay, Commissioner Candelaria.
Here.
Commissioner Sterten?
Here.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Here.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Here.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Here.
Commissioner Muschirocky?
Here.
Commissioner Patton?
Here.
Uh, Madam Chair, current?
I'm here.
Commissioner Vader?
Here.
Commissioner Cypher? I think that's Commissioner Cypher on the, on the list area. I'll, I'll, I'll circle back to him. Uh, Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Timmons?
Here.
And Commissioner Wade?
Good morning.
Here.
All right, you're here. I'm just gonna circle back to Commissioner Cypher. Are you on the line? Okay, in, in any case, we have a forum manager.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Um, I just want everybody to know, along that lower screen area of buttons, there's a little blue button that ha- well, it's blue if you, uh, open it, looks like a little speech bubble from the comic strip. That's the chat button. If you want to, um, if Commissioner Cypher, if you're having, uh, technical troubles and you wanna put something in the chat letting us know you're here, feel free to do that. Um, but that's, uh, that's another communication method available during this meeting. It really is important for everyone to think, oh, I see David Cypher's picture. Can you hear us? Okay, good. Commissioner Cypher appears to be here. So we have a full complement of commissioners. So everyone, please do mute unless you're speaking and raise your hand, you know, so I can see you or put something in the chat, or, uh, it's sometimes it can be difficult for me to know when people wanna speak. I do my best. It's really important for everyone to identify themselves when they speak by name, because there are many people on this, um, meeting that don't recognize voices or faces, and, uh, for people on the phone, you may only be able to see your phone number and not know your name. So that's very, very important for our record-keeping and, um, public information purposes. Uh, the Open Government Division of the Attorney General's Office has provided the orders and commissions to, uh, to go ahead and meet during the, uh, Public Health Emergency virtually in this method to time-sensitive matters. We have a number of time-sensitive matters on our agenda today, and so, uh, we are meeting, uh, online this way. If you have any technical difficulties, we do have an IT staff member from the Environment Department on call and available to help you. Her name's Lori Gaska. Her phone number is five oh five two three one zero nine one four. Uh, or you can put something in the chat or reach out to Cody Barnes, our administrator, uh, who is online as well. We still have all our normal rules of decorum for a commission meeting. There will be a time for public comment. If you wish to make a public comment, that's number four on our agenda. Please refrain from speaking until we get to that part, and, um, I will, you know, allow people to speak at that time on the agenda. And, uh, please remember again, mute yourself when you're not speaking. Speak one at a time so that everything gets recorded. These WebEx meetings are not only being broadcast in this manner, they are being recorded and they will be posted on the WQCC website. Uh, all of our votes today will be by roll call vote so that everyone will know who voted on, on everything. And, um, I think that's all I have about how we're going to conduct ourselves. The other thing that I would ask is, if during public comment or any other time in the meeting, if you're a phone call-in person, please identify your name and your phone number so that, uh, we can see that on our screen and, and know where you are. That would be very helpful. So, we have an agenda for today's meeting. Uh, commissioners, what is your pleasure with this agenda?
This is Gabriel Wade. I would move that we approve the agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second for now?
Seconds from Howard Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Cody, would you please call a roll? Call a vote on that.
Certainly. Um, Commissioner Candelaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterten?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Commissioner Muschirocky?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Madam Chair, current?
Yes.
Commissioner Vader? Uh, Commissioner Cypher, I'm not sure if your mic is still working, but, um, if that is, you can speak now or type in the chat.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I am here. And here. Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Great, the motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the meeting minutes from our last May twelfth meeting. Uh, those were sent out to all commissioners. Uh, as usual, I believe our administrator did an excellent job on these. I didn't find anything, but sometimes our eagle-eyed commissioners have things. So, we have a motion on that, and then we will have discussion.
This is, uh, Howard Hutchinson. I move we approve the minutes.
This is Gabriel Wade. I second that motion.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on that, commissioners? All right, then, uh, would you call a roll call vote, please, Cody?
Of course. Commissioner Candelaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterten?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Commissioner Muschirocky?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Madam Chair, current?
Yes.
Commissioner Vader?
Yes.
Commissioner Cypher?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Right, now we are on agenda, agenda item number four, public comments. So, I'm wondering if we have anybody at the time of the meeting that would like to make a general public comment, not anything specific about any item on the agenda today, uh, for discussion later. We'll have an opportunity for people to comment on that then. But does anyone, uh, have a comment in general or for the commission?
Uh, Ma- Ma- Madam Chair, I just chatted. Uh, can I, can I go ahead, or do you want us to unmute?
Um, can I ask what, what, do you, are you commenting on a specific item on the agenda? Miss, you're Jeremy Nichols from Wilder Guardians, is that correct?
Yes, I'm not, I'm not speaking on any agenda item, no, just fun.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Nichols.
Great, I can go ahead? Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Jeremy Nichols, and I'm the Climate and Energy Program Director for Wilder Guardians, and I really appreciate your time, and I just wanna thank you all for, um, weathering this, uh, this crisis and continuing to do this very, very important business for the state of New Mexico. I just wanted to provide some comments today regarding the issue of produced water regulation. The Oil Conservation Division, uh, just proposed, uh, a rulemaking hearing for July thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty, and the proposal would amend their regulations to upguide the regulation of produced water. And I wanna say that we are, uh, pretty concerned that there's a lot of language in there that, uh, defers to the Water Quality Control Commission and their regulation of produced water. And we're very worried that there may be, uh, a presumption that the Water Quality Control Commission will develop regulations that ultimately allow the discharge of produced water into natural systems and potentially, uh, to be reused for other purposes. And although we know that there's a lot of talk about the promise of produced water regulation, uh, we feel that there are enormous risks and uncertainties that have yet to be resolved, and that the notion that the Water Quality Control Commission, uh, will regulate produced water seems very, very far off, and it seems very irresponsible to presume that that will eventually happen. Uh, we hope that the commission is coordinating with the Oil Conservation Division to ensure that the division is not, um, uh, moving forward too quickly under the presumption that the Water Quality Control Commission will in fact authorize discharge of produced water or reuse in other purposes. Uh, so we just wanna make sure that, um, the commission is aware of that, and we wanted to fight that for the commission here, as, uh, it does seem as if the Oil Conservation Division is, is putting a lot on the Water Quality Control Commission's shoulders, and we just want to be very careful, especially considering the enormous risks associated with, uh, potentially discharging water that may be too contaminated to treat ultimately. Uh, we're very concerned about radio nuclides and other, uh, substances in produced water that, uh, as far as we've seen, uh, are very difficult, if not impossible, to, to remove and to treat safely. So we just wanna urge, uh, the commission and, and others involved in this issue to bring forth immense caution and to not move too quickly and ultimately subject state waters at risk. Thanks for that, Commissioner. Comment this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Um, I'll, I will just tell you that, uh, we are certainly aware of that, um, that rulemaking that OCC is, is undertaking. The Chair of the Commission, Gabriel Wade, uh, you know, works at Energy and Minerals, Energy Minerals and Natural Resources, and one of the great things about the Water Quality Control Commission is the participation of these many different state agencies on the commission. The Produced Water Act that was passed at the last legislative session allowed, uh, OCD to continue regulating produced water within the oil and gas industry as it has for decades, and gave to NMED via rulemaking through the WQCC the opportunity to regulate the use of produced water outside that industry. Uh, although I am the Deputy Secretary of the Environment Department, I am not participating in any way in that process in the agency. I know they've had an ongoing public process. I know there's ongoing research into this matter, and I know that the two agencies do work together, coordinate, and have done some public meetings together, but I can't know the details of what they're doing. I understand that there, you know, at some point may be some rules that will be proposed to the commission perhaps towards the end of this calendar year. That will be our usual completely public process. There will be opportunities for all members of the public to review and participate in that rulemaking, so there will be many future opportunities for you all to bring your concerns to the commission, uh, as that unfolds. So, I just wanted to let you know that, yes, we are, we are very aware of that.
Great, thank you very much.
Does anyone else have any public comment, uh, on this that they'd like to provide, or, or any other subject for the Water Quality Control Commission? It looks like, um, Ms. Khan, you wanna make a comment during a particular agenda item. I'm not seeing anything else in the chat, so why don't we go ahead and move to our, well, I'll just say, go on one, go on twice, three times. Okay. Uh, I'll go to number five on our agenda, the Water Quality Management Plan and Continuous, Continuing Planning Process, which is a whole lot of alphabet soup, WQMP slash CPP. Crystal Weatherly, Counsel for NMED, please proceed.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay? Okay. So, good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Crystal Weatherly. I'm Assistant General Counsel at NMED, and I'm also Counsel for the Surface Water Quality Bureau on the update to the State Water Quality Management Plan and Continuing Planning Process. Um, I have with me today here Jennifer Fulham, who is the Team Leader for Water Quality Standards Planning and Reporting, and Shelley Lemon, who is the Bureau Chief of the Surface Water Quality Bureau. Um, today, in accordance with the Federal Clean Water Act and the New Mexico Water Quality Act, the Surface Water Quality Bureau is seeking the commission's approval of the updated Water Quality Management Plan and CPP, uh, which we may refer to as WQMP, CPP, um, sorry, Continuing Planning Process. Um, in preparation for this meeting, uh, the following documents were submitted to the commission in advance, the draft of the Water Quality Management Plan and Continuing Planning Process, Appendix A, um, the Anti-Degradation Policy Implementation Procedure for Regularized Activities, Appendix C, the Hydrology Protocol, and Appendix C, Hydrology Protocol Field Sheet, the Surface Water Quality Bureau's Response to Comments on the November twenty-second, twenty nineteen draft of the Water Quality Management Plan and Continuing Planning Process, and a clockwork summarizing, um, the major changes in the plan. Today, Jennifer Fulham will be giving a presentation on the updated Plan and Process by explaining what it is, uh, the requirements under the Clean Water Act, the goals of the revisions that were made, um, how it was updated, and how stakeholders, tribes, and the public were engaged and involved. Following the presentation, Ms. Fulham and Ms. Lemon will be available to answer questions as of now. And with that, I'll hand it over to Jennifer Fulham.
Thank you, Jennifer. Can anybody hear me?
No, you're, we're not hearing you well.
Uh, can you hear me better now?
A little bit.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Sorry, I apologize for that. Um, I have a presentation that I might share with my party. Can you hear me at all?
Now I can hear you.
Okay. I am going to sit very close to my speaker. I apologize for the audio issues. Are you able to see my presentation?
Yes, but you need to look right at your screen when you talk, or your voice fades away.
All right, okay.
Also, Ms. Fulham, before you begin, um,
Yes, sir.
the PowerPoint, if for those who don't have it and would like a copy, is on the WQCC's website, um, and that also goes for those who are on the phone who cannot see this. So if you wanna sell the, the PowerPoint, that's posted on the WQCC website.
Thank you, Cody. Um, good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Fulham, and I'm the Water Quality Standards Coordinator for the New Mexico Environment Department for the Water Quality Bureau. So I would like to thank you for accommodating us today with the time to present updates to the state's water quality management plan and continuing planning process. So, the Water Quality Management and Continuing Planning Process, also in reference to the WQMP CPP, is actually two documents that are required by the Federal Clean Water Act and the New Mexico Water Quality Act. The WQMP CPP is a moving document and serves as a mechanism to track these processes and the entities responsible for those processes that the state uses to implement its water quality program, as it pertains to meeting the goals of the Federal Clean Water Act, because these processes are in a document that is there to provide for a consistent approach to assessing and improving water quality throughout the state of Mexico. The WQMP, as it is spelled, is a management plan used to address implementation of the water quality program, to identify problems, consider alternative solutions, and recommend some sole measures. Slide three here provides the nine elements required under forty CFR one thirty point six for WQMP. As you can see, these elements focus on identifying waters where quality needs may be impacted, and identifying those entities or agencies that are responsible for implementing programs to manage or to produce water. However, in order to be effective, the plan outlined in the WQMP may only be implemented with a series of established processes. As we see in slide four, the PPT is that mechanism that provides those processes to the state's, to manage the state's water quality program under the WQMP. As listed here under element-
Ms. Fulham? You're fading, you're really fading in and out. Please try to speak more slowly and very distinctly, and I think that's gonna help.
Yes, Madam Chair. So, as listed here under elements four and five, the CPP describes general processes, such as how the WQMP is updated, and maintains how the department stores authority for intergovernmental cooperation in implementing the WQMP. Since the goal of the Clean Water Act is to maintain and promote water rights and recreational uses, the CPP requires the state implementing the process for developing and updating water quality standards, as shown under element six. In order to protect for those uses established under the Water Quality Center, as is shown in element three here, the CPP describes all processes associating with developing total maximum daily loads for waters that are not achieving water quality standards, and the process for developing water quality-based implement limits of use. Elements one, seven, eight, and nine are more specifically focused on setting up processes for managing affluent dischargeers that put the most direct emissions to waters of the state, while element two requires states to establish a process for incorporating area-wide waste treatment plans and phase in plan. Together, these nine elements provide a guide for implementation of water quality management plans. As a comprehensive document, the WQMP CPP serves as an assurance of protection of the state's waters as it pertains to upholding the goals and objectives of the Clean Water Act and the state's Water Quality Act. To extend a bit further regarding element four of the CPP, slide five provides more detail on the process and frequency for updates in the WQMP CPP. As found under forty CFR one thirty point five, the CPP is required to be reviewed periodically by EPA to ensure the state's PPP is current. There is no set schedule for review, but in general, the state updates the WQMP CPP as water quality processes, or as water quality or processes change. So in general, the process to update the WQMP CPP includes identifying needs, ensuring that federal and state's goals are being met, providing outreach, including a thirty-day public comment period on the proposed update, and then presenting those updates to the WQCC. The WQMP CPP is required to be approved by the WQCC, the Governor, and EPA before becoming effective. So, prior to the updates we're presenting today, slide six illustrates some of the updates made during the last revision back in two thousand and eleven. The changes included incorporation of new protocols, as well as updating other elements, but the major revision was the consolidation of the WQMP and CPP into one document. Prior to two thousand and eleven, these documents were updated and approved as independent documents. As you've seen in the various elements for each of these, their function is not independent, and they're overlapping topics, such as processes and identification of the municipal industrial waste treatment, absolute limitations, EMBLs, and phase in plan. As such, it's a permanent work to consolidate these plans into one comprehensive document that provides functionality for those that are implementing these various elements. But as you can see on slide eleven, the WQMP and CPP have been around since the late nineteen seventies, when they were initially adopted, and they've been updated over the past forty years, with the majority of the updates occurring in the nineteen eighties, when new elements were being included as they were being developed. So as we began this multi-visit update, we developed a series of three targeted modules, and this is shown on slide eight. First of these was to determine the functionality of the current WQMP CPP. Seeing that it's intended to be a living document, which outlines the processes and the entities responsible for upholding these processes, and is utilized by both NMED staff and non-NMED staff, it was important to evaluate and amend these documents' feasibility and availability to the extent possible, to ensure protection of the state's surface waters are being conducted consistently. Secondly, we needed to ensure the WQMP CPP was meeting the elements as outlined under forty CFR one thirty point five to one thirty point six, and if not, updating the areas that were in need of consideration. Finally, the updates to the WQMP CPP needed to incorporate updates to current processes, as well as incorporate new processes and protocols. So once the goals were established, we began the opening, an internal work group with individuals from the Surface Water Quality Bureau to Groundwater Quality Bureau.
Ms. Fulham? Yes. Um, I'm getting comments in the chat that, that, that it's virtually impossible for them to hear and follow you, and so the suggestion is that perhaps you could call in via phone. We wouldn't have your video, but you, we would be able to hear you on the phone.
I can definitely do that.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Ms. Fulham. Uh, while we're waiting for Ms. Fulham to respond, I had a, a question.
Sure.
I'm curious if we, if the commission finds that it doesn't, um, that it would like to see additional revisions made to the current, um, plan being proposed in front of us, can we make those requests, uh, to be, to be made?
Yes, I mean, we can certainly, when we come to our discussion of the plan, I don't believe our op- I don't believe our options are only to approve it or deny it. Uh, we can also approve it with additional guidance or revision. But I will ask, uh, the Surface Water Bureau and their attorney, uh, as well as our Attorney General Counsel to think about that question and maybe look things up uh, while this presentation continues so they can advise us when we get to our discussion of the plan. All right?
Thank you, Madam Chair, that's perfect.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that up.
Cody?
Uh, yeah, I can hear you.
Very well, did I sound better?
Yeah, uh, no, I sound better.
Okay.
Um, I think you need to mute your computer so that we don't hear all your background noise. Or maybe it's somebody else.
I have my tone from back to the ground, Ray's phone.
Okay.
I am getting a lot of echo.
A lot of what?
I'm hearing my voice echo back.
Hey, one second, one minute. Kathy, can you speak now?
Yes.
Okay.
It went away.
Okay, cool.
Do I need to go back or should, can I continue from here?
There is somebody on the phone, it looks like it's call-in user 13, I don't know who that is, that needs to mute their telephone so that, uh, we don't hear background noise. Everyone needs to mute if they're called in, please.
Okay, so, on slide nine, once the goals were established, we began scoping. So we had an internal work group with individuals from the Surface Water Quality Bureau, the Groundwater Quality Bureau, and Construction Programs Bureau. And as you see on slide nine, the work group set out to gain information on areas that need functionality of the WQMP and then identification of stakeholders. The late information toward these key components. A nine-question survey was developed and sent out to 1,708 individuals via email. The recipients were compiled from the Bureau's GovDeliveries with Charter list. Those individuals not on the GovDelivery list but were identified as being interested in the recent Nonpoint Force Management Plan. And then a series of entities that were identified to have elements which the WQMP CPT directly or indirectly impacted the goals and missions of their agency. These included individuals from bureaus from NMAD, other state agencies, nonprofit organizations, and federal agencies, including EPA. The diversity and the extent of the individuals solicited was broad and extensive and they intend to capture meaningful engagement early on in the process for those that wanted to participate. So of the 1,708 emails, 25 individuals responded. Of those respondents, and as seen in this pie chart, 50% identified as representing a non-government entity. Almost 20% were from a federal agency, almost 16% were from a state agency, including NMAD in New Mexico Game and Fish, almost 8% were from a Soil and Water Conservation District, and one individual represented the New Mexico Municipal League. This shows that although limited in number, the respondents to this scoping survey represented a fairly diverse group of entities. So diving into the first part of our three goals for the update, we looked at the functionality of the WQMP CPT. On slide 10, you'll see our approach included using elements of charter from our scoping survey, an internal dialogue with staff to determine whether we could improve and where we could improve the functionality. Our findings found that there was a strong need to enhance functionality. So as a result, we've since developed our, redeveloped our website to enhance accessibility to provide more background on what the WQMP is and the history of the document. We also began an internal process for reviewing the WQMP CPT more often. We're now starting to review and update this document on a biennial basis to align with timing with triennial reviews and the biennial 303D, 305C integrated reports. So as I'll show you in the next few slides, the survey provided us with data that demonstrates the need to provide regular and meaningful education on engagement with the public. So on slide 11, we examine how we determine functionality. Part of the scoping survey that was sent out asked respondents the level of involvement they have in implementing questions for the WQMP CPT. The blue pie chart shows responses as broken down by percentage. The blue section in particular shows that of the 25 respondents, more than a third implement questions for the statewide WQMP CPT. However, as told on another question in that survey, of those 25 respondents, and as shown in the dark pink pie chart, 57% did not find themselves familiar enough with the document to provide an input on potential updates. The results pretty striking because it pertains to the functionality of the WQMP CPT for those individuals that actually implement processes for the state's water quality management plan. We wanted to look at what areas these respondents looked like most often so we can see what retention functionality. So here on slide 12, we have two graphs to elaborate what areas that the WQMP CPT respondents worked within. The purple pie chart on the upper right is the same pie chart we saw in our last slide showing that 36% of the respondents implement questions of the statewide WQMP CPT. The bar graph gives us visual representation of another question posed in the survey which asked what portions do respondents work in. The question allowed respondents to check all areas that were applicable. So on your x-axis, you can see the number of responses with actual response for any given area to the right of each bar. The y-axis provides areas of the WQMP respondents worked within. For preliminary responses, the majority of respondents work under permitting, whether it's NTDs or Regent Bell, monitoring water quality, or development of water quality standards. Well, as we talked about in a few minutes, these were actually the areas we found to need the most updates and received most comment from the public. So as we move to slide 13, we now shift to our second goal, which was to ensure the WQMP CPT was meeting federal and state requirements. As I introduced earlier, those 18 elements are required under 40 CFR 130.5 and 130.6 for the WQMP CPT. However, within those elements, there are references to other portions of the Clean Water Act. This is specifically Section 303 and 208. In addition to the federal requirements, the state's Water Quality Act and the regulations that uphold that act include a water quality standard, a groundwater and surface water regulation, and then the overarching rulemaking procedures for the commission. So as many of the processes under the WQMP CPT are of decision-making nature, their federal and state requirements need it for meaningful engagement. On the federal end, we find most of those under 40 CFR 25.4. So as the work group went through these requirements, we found only a few areas that needed clarification, one of which was Section 14, which just sets public participation. As you may see in the updated WQMP CPT we're presenting to you today, language was added to reflect the federal requirements under 40 CFR 25.4 and the State Rule Act. So moving on now to our third goal on slide 14, there were several key areas we worked on updating. As any living document that is updated periodically over time and which can become compartmentalized and fragmented, leading to a copy, almost bifurcated work. Over the 40 years, these documents have been in existence and the numerous updates to various sections, we found this to be true with the WQMP CPT as well. So part of this update was to reformat and organize the document as a whole to add clarity and consistency thereby adding to its overall functionality. As with any update, we also worked on correcting any grammatical and typographical errors as well as updating all of the citations and references. As a working document, it's important to ensure these references are correct for usability. So as you may have noticed in the current WQMP CPT, we had elements that did not have a direct association to the elements under 40 CFR. It wasn't that these sections did not belong or didn't pertain to those elements. It was just a matter of not breaking out the various portions to the appropriate element. So in order to clarity to the user, we integrated the wetland program to the Nonpoint Force section of the WQMP CPT. The state of New Mexico is progressive in the fact that wetlands are defined as waters of the state and they have use to protect them. So therefore, the application of these processes that we discussed in the WQMP CPT are also applicable to wetlands and that better reflects it in the current, in the updated version. So with these various types of updates and restructuring of the format, a redlined, striped-out version was determined to be less than helpful. So the Bureau provided a summary of the more significant changes in a crosswalk. And this was to help the commission, um, users of the WQMP and the public. And this has been provided to the commissioners for review prior to the update. So as we move to slide 15, there were two areas to which we incorporated new processes. This included the process for adopting or revising temporary water quality standards under Section 2, and there was a major undertaking to revise the anti-degradation policy implementation procedure for regulated activities, which is otherwise referred to as the A-TIP. The A-TIP was already part of the WQMP CPT, but due to the complete restructuring, it's being considered a new process as it pertains to updates being brought before you today. So in order to present the new A-TIP, we can turn to slide 16. As you can see here, we've incorporated processes and procedures for identifying protection levels on a tiered approach and established procedures for determining baseline water quality. From that, we can determine the level of water quality degradation expected from a potential discharge and the procedures for identifying and assessing less degrading or mondegrading alternatives. There's also a section to assist users in determining social and economic importance for tier-two waters and the processes for intergovernmental coordination and participation. To support the user, there are now appendices which provide guidance and worksheets for navigating through the anti-degradation process for regulated entities. So as updates were being scoped and compiled, there was additional work being conducted to ensure engagement with tribes. The efforts to title outreach are summarized under slide 17. So as many of you may understand, the state's water quality regulations are not applicable to tribal waters within exterior boundaries of a tribe or those lands in which the tribe has incorporated into federal trust. And although the jurisdiction is clear, many waters cross boundaries under jurisdictional protection and as such, there's a shared interest in the protection of water quality between tribes and the state of New Mexico. The state recognizes the importance of communication and collaboration with tribes to ensure water quality across boundaries. So under the tribal, under the department's tribal collaboration and consultation policy, we sought out input from the Tribal Environment Department Directors, which announced the state's initiation of the updates for the WQMP and then posed some questions to gauge interest and concern. New questions inquired about any impact the WQMP CPT may have on implementation of tribal water quality programs, if there were any changes or concerns that should be addressed as the state considers fair updates, and if there was interest in participating in the process and if so, if they wanted to meet with the department. In addition to the directing of the tribes, the scoping survey that was sent out to the 1,708 individuals included at least 24 contacts from 18 tribes. And although the direct solicitation to tribal environment directors did not offer the response, two representatives, one from Polackin's bubble and one from Tuputi bubble, did identify as having interest in the WQMP CPT through the scoping survey. And neither one, we reached out to them, but neither one felt it necessary to meet with us prior to saying the draft. The draft went out to all the tribes on November 22nd, 2019, but no comment or receipt. The slide 18 shows some of the requirements for public engagement as identified under 40 CFR 25.4. The first of these is to provide the public with the information and assistance necessary for meaningful involvement. The Bureau did this in part by developing a limited English proficiency evaluation and a public involvement plan. This plan was completed on November 22nd, 2019. The second requirement states that reports, studies, tests, and other documents must be provided in a central location. To accommodate the public, the Bureau had documents available as of November 22nd, 2019 in both hard and electronic formats. Hard copies were available in our offices in Santa Fe and could have been mailed upon request. And electronic access was provided in several locations, including the NMAD calendar and three locations on the Surface Water Quality Bureau's website. Third, and probably the areas which the department invested considerable resources to accommodate the stakeholders less of affected and interested parties. The scoping survey that was sent out in 2018 to the 1,708 individuals was in part to provide opportunities for individuals to identify as a stakeholder for the WQMP CPT. Of those that responded, 12 individuals requested to be identified as a stakeholder. Those included one Surface Water Quality Bureau staff, one individual from the state land office, two tribal representatives, as we discussed on the previous slide, one from the San Juan Soil and Water Conservation District, three federal agencies, including USDA, US Army Corps of Engineers, and US Forest Service, one municipality representing the city of Farmington, one nonprofit representing Green Gulf Environmental, one representative from Los Alamos National Laboratory, and one from the San Juan Water Commission. So on slide 19, we have the final requirement under 40 CFR 25.4, where the Bureau is required to notify stakeholders in a timely fashion prior to any major decision. The Bureau accommodated this by communicating with stakeholders prior to drafting updates both at the point of the scoping survey and following up from the survey to determine if there was interest in having a discussion on the potential changes. And then we notified stakeholders and the general public of the 45-day public comment period of November 22nd, 2019, as well as the 30-day extension of the public comment period on January 6th, 2020. Notification was also provided on several areas of the Bureau's website. So as we see on slide 20, the engagement and opportunity provided to the public produced a decent level of responses. Overall, the Bureau receives 195 comments from six different entities, which includes amigos tratos in collaboration with numerous undersigned organizations, ETA Region 6, Los Alamos National Laboratory, CEI Consultants on behalf of Chevron Mining President Line, and the San Juan Water Commission, as well as the municipal municipalities. In addition, the department identified additional grammatical and typographical corrections which were also addressed in our decisions. I apologize, I went too far. So on Slide twenty-one, we broke down the comments by type. Of the hundred and ninety-five comments, none were as supportive of work N and E did to update the WQMP CPT. Four comments did not request any changes, while a hundred and eighty-two did. Most of the comments are focused in the update to the A-TIP in Appendix A, which was effective considering the extent of nature of those updates. Um, there are also almost an equal number of edits to the WQMP itself and the hydrology protocol, which is found in Appendix B. As was mentioned here, that Appendix B is the list of TMDLs, and it is updated when a new TMDL is approved by the Water Quality Control Commission, so there were no updates or amendments to the portion of the WQMP. So each of the comments was reviewed and considered closely, and if more did, changes were made to the document. Each comment received a resolution and a reasoning which was summarized in the response to comments, and sent to each of the senators on May twenty-sixth. The compilation of responses has also been provided to each of the commissioners as part of this presentation. So as we conclude, we'd like to go over each of the three goals that this update set out to accomplish in our findings. First, the functionality of the WQMP CPT has been improved through overall readability, accurate references, and accessibility of the document. Secondly, the WQMP meets the federal requirements bound under 40 CFR 130.5 and 130.6. And third, this update now provides for current processes in the implementation of the state's water quality program. So at this point, as we go to Slide twenty-four, the Bureau has provided the commissions with a reasoning for the updating of the WQMP CPT, the level of public engagement provided, and the results of the comments that have been considered during this update. It is at this point that the Bureau respectfully requests the consideration on a scrupulous update to the WQMP and its appendices. If approved, the Bureau will then proceed with obtaining the required approvals from EPA. Once EPA approves their approval, once EPA provides their approval, the updated WQMP CPT will become effective for implementation of our water quality program and will be made publicly available on the Bureau's website. I am aware that I have provided an extensive amount of information regarding the WQMP CPT and the process that was taken to update it, so at this point, I'd like to again express our appreciation for the commission's time and introduce the Bureau Chief of the Surface Water Quality Bureau, Shelley Lemon, to assist with answering any questions unless our council has anything further to add. Counsel?
I don't have anything further at this moment, thanks, Jennifer.
Madam Chair?
Um, I think this is Mr. Sanchez, counsel for the commission.
Yes, it is, and I'd like to, I'd like to initially, if I could please, address the question one of the commissioners had about whether they could make, uh, changes to the plan as presented.
Of course, but first, I'm going to ask if Ms. Fulham would stop sharing her screen so that I can see the other, get the rest of my screen back to meeting participants, that would be really helpful. Thank you. Sure, uh, Mr. Sanchez, please proceed. How was that information, the commissioners? Thank you.
The, the point at the beginning is Subsection, Subsection 4-6-4, subsection C, and it says or reads, "The commission shall adopt a comprehensive water quality management program and develop a continuing planning process." There's a couple of companion review corresponding federal regulations that pertain to those two components. The first one is 40 CFR 130.5, and particularly, uh, subsection C, and the other one, that, that pertains to the continuing planning process, and 40 CFR 130.6, uh, subpart A, and that particular CFR pertains to the Water Quality Management Plan. If you'll permit me, I'd like to, um, read or refer to the pertinent sections in each of those federal regulations.
Sure, go ahead, thank you.
The, there's nothing, I've, I've read as, um, as you suggested I do in the interim, I've read 130.5, uh, regarding the continuing process, process, there is nothing that I read in this, in the regulation that does, that prohibits or disallows in any way the commission to suggest change revisions or have the department go back and revisit some of what they've included in their proposed plan. Uh, let me, the, the only part that's relevant here, and, and this is really at the end of the process, is that subsection C, my apologies, subsection C of 130.5, uh, talks about the regional administrator reviewing the state's CPT from time to time, and, uh, so there's that requirement, then going back to 130.6. And again, this is, uh, I'm sorry, my, I'm having to work remotely and my, uh, there's a bunch of latency in the connectivity. The subsection that's relevant in 130.6 is rather subpart as E, and that speaks of update and certification. Says, "State and/or area-wide WQM plans shall be updated as needed to reflect changing water quality conditions, result of implementation actions, new requirements or to remove conditions in prior conditional or partial plan approvals. Regional administrators may require the WQM plans to be updated as needed. State continuing process plans shall be, shall specify the process and stage reviews of revised WQM plans. The state shall ensure that the state and the area-wide WPM plans together include all necessary plan elements, and that each such plan are consistent with one another. The governor and the, or the governor's designated, so certified by a letter to the regional administrator for the EPA, approval of the, of the plans and updates, and that they are consistent with other parts of the plan. The certification may be continued, or rather contained, in the annual state work program." So there's nothing in statute or regulation that precludes the commissioners from, um, suggesting, requesting, uh, changes to the plan as presented. And just not to put too fine a point on things, but, uh, we received a proposed order from council, and aside from how fully insufficient it was, uh, that, that order spoke of revised and updated, there's nothing in the statute or the regulations speak of revisions, it's entirely, it speaks entirely to updates. And again, um, there's, there's a minor discrepancy in the language between the statute and the regulations. One speaks of approval, the other speaks of adoption. I think properly, in the case of a plan, the commission is adopting, in the case of the process, it is developing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. So I just want to check with the Surface Water Quality Bureau and counsel, is there anything else that you all wanted to say about this process? Uh, or, or are you finished with your presentation, and now I can move to commissioner and, and members of the public questions?
Madam Chair, this is Krista Weatherly, counsel for the Surface Water Quality Bureau. Um, I, uh, thank you, Mr. Sanchez, Council Sanchez. I wanted to also address Ms. Ray's, or, um, Commissioner Ray's question. Um, Mr. Sanchez is correct that the, um, the statutes and the, um, regulations are silent as to, um, whether the commission can, um, uh, direct or implement changes to the plan. Um, the, the EPA administrator does, um, need to, um, approve the, um, the, the plan as approved by the commission. Um, but this is something that the Bureau and I were discussing, um, just in the past day, and that the anticipation from the Bureau is that there would be consideration of the commission's input into the, um, updated plan and continuing planning process. Um, and I'd like to ask, um, the Bureau to add any comments that they have.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is Shelley Lemon, uh, the Surface Water Quality Bureau Chief. And like counsel was saying, um, we, we will consider and incorporate changes requested by the commission on the plan and the process. Um, in the past, in previous version, our updates, we have, uh, provided additional updates that the commission wanted included into, um, the WQMP CPT, so it's, it's something that we can, um, definitely do, and like counsel was saying, uh, there isn't any direction in the regulation on, you know, how to make that happen, but we, the Bureau has come before the commission, um, we come before the commission regularly with total maximum due loads, which are updates to the Water Quality Management Plan, and we, um, implement changes in the final document that the commission requests. So, um, it's something that can happen.
All right, thank you for that. Um, I think maybe before I go to commissioners, uh, I, I've had information that there are some members of the public who would like to make a comment, uh, at, on this, on this plan. Um, I think, uh, Rachel Khan, you wanted to make a comment? Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Madam Chair and members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to give public comments. My name is Rachel Khan, and I'm the Project Director for Amigos Bravo. We are a statewide organization that works to protect and restore the waters of New Mexico. I would like to provide a public comment on Agenda Item Five, the Water Quality Management Plan and Continuing Planning Process. Amigos Bravo from the Western Environmental Law Center, along with New Mexico Wild, the New Mexico Aseca Commission, the Upper Pecos Watershed Association, the New Mexico Aseca Association, New Mexico Wildlife Federation, um, the New Mexico Environmental Law Center, Western Resource Advocates, and COW Unlimited submitted seventy-seven discreet comments on the Water Quality Management Plan and Continuing Planning Process and related appendices, such as the Anti-Degradation Policy Implementation Procedures and the Hydrology Protocol. We would like to commend and thank the Surface Water Quality Bureau for considering our comments and preparing a detailed response to, uh, comment documents. While many of our comments were addressed and corresponding changes were made to the final document, we still have numerous outstanding concerns. While I will highlight several of them here, I do not have enough time to go into all of our outstanding concerns. Madam Chair and members of the commission, if you have not already done so, I urge you to review our written comments to get a full picture of our, our perspective and our continuing concerns. I will now go into detail on four of these issues. The first, the first issue I'd like to address is about climate mitigation and adaptation. We strongly suggest that the state add a section to the Water Quality Management Plan and Continuing Planning Process that identifies climate mitigation and adaptation strategy. For example, the Water Quality Management Plan Continuing Planning Process should reference and build upon the governor's 2019 climate strategy, which recommends increasing the number of action plans for wildlife, excuse me, for wildfire control and watershed health, as well as designating outstanding national resource waters as a mechanism for protecting New Mexico's waters in the face of the changing climate. So that is part of the, the governor's climate strategy. Uh, the initial recommendations and status updates as part of that, that, uh, strategy. We are glad to read the Surface Water Quality Bureau's response to this comment, where they said, "The concept of the Water Quality Management Plan and Continuing Planning Process and the development of the water quality standards is to build within resiliency in the light of climate change and natural variability of ecosystems." That was a direct quote. Um, yet this is not, this intent is not articulated in the plan itself, and we recommend adding of the goal of adapting to and mitigating climate impact on water resources to the goal section of the plan, in addition, also adding a section specific to climate mitigation and adaptation in the body of the plan. So that's the first, uh, issue I wanted to go into detail on. The second one is, um, included in Section 2D of the Water Quality Management Plan, it outlines the process for revising water quality standards. In our comments, we noted that the plan is imbalanced and that it gives detailed information on a number of occasions about how to downgrade or weaken water quality standards, but does not give similar detailed information about how to strengthen water quality standards. For example, there are sections on how to obtain temporary standards and site-specific standards, these are found on page section two, ten. Um, both of these are processes that are used to weaken the standards. Yet there isn't a reciprocal language provided in the plan that gives examples of how the public could petition to strengthen standards. The Surface Water Quality in their response to comments on this issue replied that all examples we gave in our comments could fall under the section that outlines how to change a designated use through a use-tainmentability analysis, and this section is found on page two, four. Uh, this is actually inaccurate. We gave examples of situations where someone may want to propose a new narrative standard, or changes to existing, or changes to existing narrative standards, or changes to strengthen a specific numeric criteria, or perhaps someone may want to propose an outstanding water designation. All of these examples are not changes to designated uses. Uh, we recommend it, uh, and we continue to recommend adding examples of situations where the public can petition for more protective standards. Right now, if there's an imbalance where the plan goes into detailed paragraphs about how, about the processes and opportunities for downgrading standards, but doesn't have a reciprocal, uh, section for examples of how to, uh, people could petition for stronger standards. Following up on this comment, we would like to note that we take issue with a requirement implied in the plan that to upgrade a designated use, a use-tainmentability analysis must be conducted. State and federal regulations only require a U, a use-tainmentability analysis, also called a UAA, if a use is proposed to be downgraded, so it's only, regulations only require UAA if you're going to weaken a, a use. The requirement in the plan places an unnecessary and undue burden on both the state and the public to upgrade protection. In fact, federal regulations require that all existing uses be protected, and, and if you don't, um, and, and that you don't, and you shouldn't have to, and you aren't required, according to statements like federal regu, regulations, to perform a full UAA to show proof that a use is existing. For example, documentation through pictures and testimonials that people are swimming in a water body should be enough proof that a primary contact use is an existing use and is therefore required by law to be incorporated as a designated use into the standards. Someone shouldn't have to go through a full UAA process to make sure that that, um, requirement, that federal requirement under the law is met in the standards. The third area of, of the, of our comments that I'd like to touch on right now is, um, where we mention the need for an NPDES safety net program, or for the state to take on full primacy of the NPDES program. The Water Quality Management Plan outlines the current The Water Quality Management Plan outlines the current National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, permitting structure in New Mexico. You can see that in the plan at 5, Section 5, 1 through 5, 5. However, changes in federal policy and regulations have weakened the effectiveness of the federal NPDES program to protect against point source pollution to New Mexico's surface waters. In particular, the Trump Administration's recent Dirty Water Rule, also known as the 2020 Navalicable Waters Protection Rule, which was finalized in April, drastically reduces the scope of surface waters, of protected, under the Federal Clean Water Act, and has a disproportionately negative and perhaps even disastrous impact to New Mexico's surface waters. Despite the fact that pollution discharges will not stop, the Dirty Water Rule eliminates NPDES permitting requirements for various discharges across New Mexico. Given these new circumstances, a plan should identify what the state intends to do to protect water quality in the wake of the federal government's abdication and responsibility to protect water quality. The Surface Water Quality Bureau, in their response to comments, said that the plan was written under the 2015 rule, which was in place prior to this 2020 Dirty Water Rule. This is no longer the case, and while it may have been the case when the first draft of the plan was released in November, it is no longer the case now, and nor was it the case when the response to comments were, were sent. We now have a drastically changed situation for water quality protection in the state, where a large portion of the state's waters are no longer protected by the Clean Water Act. And we think that the plan should acknowledge this drastic gap and identify the need for and the intent of the state to address this gap. Finally, on my last issue, I know I'm going on here, and I, I thank the Commission for your, for your patience, and, and I'm going to wrap up soon. The, the fourth issue is, has to do with the Water Quality Control Management Plan and Anti-Degradation Policy Implementation Plan, which is one of the appendices of the plan. And this is specific to non-point source pollution. We think that the plan is lacking in guidance on how to control non-point source pollution in the context of anti-degradation. The Surface Water Quality Bureau, in their response to comments, states that this is supposed to be covered in the Non-Point Source Management Plan. Yet, there is nothing in the Non-Point Management Plan specific to anti-degradation, except to refer the reader back to anti-degradation language in the standard. There is no mention in the Non-Point Source Management Plan of non-point source pollution control approaches in the context of anti-degradation, and there isn't even a mention at all of Tier 1 or Tier 2 protection. Again, this goes back to our main point, that the appropriate place to include guidance and provisions related to how to implement anti-degradation in the context of non-point source pollution is in the Anti-Degradation Policy Implementation Plan itself. The title of the plan is not Anti-Degradation Policy Implementation, Anti-Degradation Policy Implementation Plan or Point Sources Only. It is the one and only Anti- Degradation Policy Implementation Plan that we have in the state. And we encourage, encourage you to think broader in, when looking at anti-degradation implementation and just point sources. Especially now, with our current situation where point source management in the state is being drastically weakened in the context of the 2020 Dirty Water Rule. As I noted previously, this represents only a small subset of our comments. I hope that the Commission has had the chance to review in detail our written comments, and I thank you, Madam Chair and Members of the Commission, for this opportunity to give public comments. And before I end, I did want to follow up on a quick question from Ms. Pholm's presentation. She mentioned that the plan needs to have EPA approval and Governor approval. And I'm wondering if there is Governor approval, a Governor approval step. I didn't see it in that last slide of next, next step. And with that, I will conclude my public comment. Thank you so much for, for giving me the time.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Instead of going to questions for the Bureau immediately, I've noted that one, I actually had that question myself. So thank you for bringing that one up. I'll note that down. Is there any other, I would like to get all the public comments in, and then we'll go to Commissioner questions, and, and then we'll go to Commissioner discussion. So is there anybody else in the public that would, or anybody else on the call that would like to make public comment on this matter? Um, it looks like Jaccy Dabel, I'm not sure how to pronounce your name, sir. Would you be indicated in the chat, you might can make a comment? Is this a good time?
Yes, this is wonderful, Madam Chair and Members of the Commission. Thank you so much for, for the opportunity to provide this comment and for all of the work on, on this proposal. I'll be brief. My name is Jaccy Dabel, and I'm the Executive Director of the New Mexico Wildlife Federation. The New Mexico Wildlife Federation was founded in 1914 by Aldo Luque Polo, and we are an organization that represents primarily the hunters and anglers of New Mexico. The New Mexico Wildlife Federation also submitted written comments, as Rachel mentioned in her previous comment, and I would just really like to echo and emphasize the points that Rachel made. And so to prevent repetitiveness, I won't go through all of this specific points that Rachel mentioned. I think she did a terrific job and was very thorough in covering many of our concerns. As she said, though, the, the full extent of our concern is available in the written comments that we submitted back in early February. So thank you very much for paying close attention to the comments that we've submitted, and thank you for the opportunity to comment here. And thank you very much, Rachel Khan, for, for that very thorough and articulate comment that you've just provided. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dabel. Did I say it right this time?
Madam Chair, you did. That was perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. I've had a question in the chat about whether NMED is going to have a chance to respond to the comments. And, and yes, of course, I, I want to make sure that they have a chance. I just thought it would be easier to get all the comments out first, give NMED a little bit of time as, as comments are coming out, to be able to collect their thoughts and, and get ready to respond to them. I see Logan, Logan's computer. Logan, would you please identify yourself and who you represent and, and give your public comment now?
Sure. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
I think so. Keep talking.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair and Members of the Commission, for the opportunity to comment on the proposal revisions to the WQMP AIP. My name is Logan Glassnapp. I'm the Staff Attorney with the New Mexico Wilderness Alliance. And I just would first like to emphasize again the comments submitted by Rachel Khan, both today during this meeting, but also the comments that we joined submitted in writing. And I would encourage all members of the Commission to thoroughly read through those and, and give them full consideration before moving on to any kind of final decision. And I would also just like to particularly emphasize that the Anti- Degradation Policy, the Implementation Plan should provide guidance as to what steps should be taken if degradation is found in outstanding waters. This guidance should be included, not in the Non-Point Management Plan as suggested by NMED, but in the Anti- Degradation Policy Implementation Plan itself, as that degradation could be coming from either non-point or point source of pollution. So that's it. And again, I would, I would just emphasize that the comments that we submitted along with Amigos Bravo and WELC should be given due consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else that wants to make a public comment? I, it's hard for me to see all the screens at runtime. So if someone wants to make a comment, I'm going to ask that they speak up now. Okay, one once, one twice, one three times. If someone's having technical trouble, please put something in the chat and, and we'll give you a, a chance. So I think now I'll go back to NMED to respond to the comments that were brought out, and then I'll go to Commissioners for questions.
Madam Chair, this is Crystal Weatherly, Council for the Surface Water Quality Bureau. I'd like to address the question about Governor approval, if, if this is an appropriate time to do that?
Yes, please.
Okay, so 40 CFR 130.6E discusses that the Water Quality Management Plan shall be updated as needed to reflect changing water quality conditions and other elements. It also states that the Governor, or the Governor's Designee, shall certify by letter to EPA Regional Administrator that, that the Water Quality Management Plan updates are consistent with all other parts of the plan. So it isn't to say that the Governor's Office approves of the plan is not quite the correct language, but the correct language is that the Governor, Governor's Designee certifies that it's consistent with all other parts of the plan. Right now, we are in the process of reaching out to the Governor's Office to designate the Designee, who will do this, and it will be most likely a Secretary Kenny of New Mexico Environment Department, in the past has been the Secretary of the Environment Department. I hope that answers that question.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Would you and your team like to respond or to any of the other comments, or, or give any other statements about the comments?
I'm going to refer to the Bureau. Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is Shelley Lemon. Sorry, I don't have video for some reason. My video is not working today. So between Jennifer's audio and my video, we make a whole unit. Anyways, I wanted to respond to a couple of things that Ms. Khan mentioned in her comments, as well as Mr. Dabel and Mr. Glass. First, for, I'm going to kind of go out of order in the way that it was presented, but for the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, the NPDES Safety Net Program, we are fully aware of the Navalicable Waters Protection Rule going into effect on June 22nd. The state of New Mexico is involved in litigation to prevent that from happening. And given that it's currently unrevolved, it's really hard to predict how we will need to respond, although we are, we are taking things into consideration right now. But to put forward a fully developed plan at this point without knowing the outcome is really difficult. And we started this revision in 2017, late 2017. So that was, I think we may have seen the executive order to create a new rule, but it's, it's been in the background. I'm imagining that now we've done this significant revision, we'll be reevaluating this in two years when we know more. And again, I think that also applies to the climate mitigation and adaptation strategies. It is something that we are working on in our department. I agree that it's something that we should address in our Water Quality Management Plan. And it is something that we will consider how to address it in the next round of revisions. I would urge not preventing us from moving forward with this update to include that information, because it's a more in-depth investigation and process to add that section. So it is something that the department is working on through the Governor's Climate Strategy, and it's something that I, we will look at for future updates. And Jennifer, I don't know if you had any, anything else to add.
Well, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is Jennifer Pholm. I'd like to thank Shelley and Crystal for clarifying on those items, and I'm in agreement with what they say. I think it's important to recognize the purpose of the WQMP CPT as being those processes in which we are currently actively falling under. And so giving updates to what the process is now is important, and with that functionality aspect, adding in a triennial review will prevent us from getting this far along without updating all our processes. So I really appreciate all the comments we received from Amigos Bravo, the undersigned organization. It is something that we acknowledge, we find important, and we anticipate incorporating into the WQMP as they become processes that we actively follow. In addition to that, there was a couple of questions about water quality standards, and I think I can try and help clarify some of those. As the WQMP CPT is written, it talks about those processes for updating water quality standards. It does not supersede our regulations, which also have processes, and they're pretty specific. And as we go through this next triennial, we are hoping to clarify some of those areas. And that includes those that are designated ONRW, which have particular protections for anti-degradation. And then for those that we are changing a designated use based on attainability, and there are several requirements under the federal law that those criteria have to be met in order to change a designated use. Rachel is correct in the fact that a use-attainability analysis under the federal regulations is only required for a designated use change in which we are making the designated use less stringent. However, we appreciate all the time and effort that our Commission gives to reviewing any of our standard changes, whether that's increasing the stringency or decreasing the stringency. And we try and make a uniform, somewhat uniform approach as to what we present to the Commission and what should be expected. And in order to make the case for an existing use change in which the stringency is being increased based on, of it used being met and being used for that, we still need to present evidence to the Commission, and we have to include that evidence as part of our submission for EPA approval. So as part of NMED's process for doing a standard change, Part 2 votes with the general requirement for any rulemaking for any standard change. And that includes ONRW, that includes updating for existing uses, or for those that are changing a designated use to a less stringent use. And then secondly, because we do need a process that the Commission can follow, that the public can follow, we do now conduct a UAA-like study for those waters that have an existing use that we want to bring to the Commission to adopt. We're required to adopt those designated uses that are more stringent than the current designated use that they're meeting them. And that's the process that NMED has been using, and we hope to continue to use because it's consistent and it's transparent. I hope that answers some of your questions. I hope that answers some of your questions.
Thank you. Chris, Ms. Weatherly, is that all you all have?
It is all I have. I'm gonna confirm with, or have the Bureau also confirm that.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, um, I'm, I'm gonna also talk about, um, Ms. Khan's presented comment on the anti-degradation policy implementation plan. So I'm gonna briefly touch on that. Um, it is focused on regulated entities and we are considering, um, for the next non-point source, uh, management plan to better clarify the anti-degradation for non-point sources. Um, we do have information in Appendix A on outstanding national resource waters and the anti-degradation policy. Um, on page three in, um, under tier three protection, tier three is applicable to all waters designated as an ONW. No degradation is allowed in an ONW except in limited specifically defined instances such as to accommodate public health or safety activities or to enable activities to restore or maintain water quality. And this is outlined in the Surface Water Quality Regulation at twenty dot six dot four dot eight, A three, and A four and Mac. So, um, it is more defined in our regulations for those ONWs and the process, um, for approval for that short-term degradation. So, um, I just wanted to point that out and I think that's all I have, um, for my responses to those comments. Thank you.
Ms. Fulham?
I have no more comments, but I'm sure.
Okay. Thank you very much, NMED. So I'll move to comments, questions from commissioners and then we'll go to commissioner deliberation and discussion. So, uh, I know there are many of our active-minded commissioners who have a lot to say. Who would like to go first?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Thompson.
Yes, Commissioner Thompson, please proceed.
So I am concerned, or I would suggest rather, that the, um, the documents give more attention to the non-point source regulatory programs, especially the NPDES and MS four program. Uh, here in Middle Rio Grande, we're spending a lot of time and money on it. It's a new process. Um, it's been implemented, implemented since the last revision of the WQMP and the CPT or whatever it is. Um, it's, uh, uh, the, the MS four program is, we've just completed our first round of permitting. We're up for renewal right now here in the, in Middle Rio Grande. Um, there's a lot of uncertainty about the effectiveness of the program and I think that, uh, that, uh, stakeholders, particularly our, uh, folks that are subject to regulation are, uh, expecting to go forward in the near future, within the next year or two, and, um, requesting changes to the, the permit, uh, conditions at least, if not the permit process. So I would like to suggest that in a number of places, the document needs to specifically refer to the MS four program and, uh, and, um, address uncertainties with its effectiveness.
NMED, any, uh, response on that?
Um, Madam Chair, Commissioner Thompson, um, we can certainly add MS four. MS four is under the broad category of stormwater and it falls under regulated activities. It's not a non-point source issue. It's a point source, um, under the NPDES program. So it would be found under, um, section six and also in the anti-degradation implementation plan. Um, stormwater is also provided in that implementation plan for anti-degradation. Um, with the NPDES permitting, the state is involved with the anti-degradation analysis or the NPDES permit before that MS four permit. Um, we also provide, uh, a Clean Water Act section four oh one certification for permits, um, to verify and confirm that they are meeting our state water quality standards. I understand, uh, your point, Ms. Thompson, about understanding the effectiveness that Middle Rio Grande MS four was the first of its kind and so it's an iterative process. And I imagine when that permit, um, is reissued, those types of things will be considered in the permit reissue. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, Ms. Lemon, I, I, I acknowledge you. I understand that the MS four is part of the NPDES permit program. Um, I did a word search and it's not, MS four is not mentioned in the document. I saw it in the, uh, anti-degradation policy, but, uh, I, I think it ought to be explicitly mentioned and discussed in, in the actual document itself. So that's my recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Uh, Commissioners?
Uh, Madam Chair, this is Chelsea, Commissioner Rader. May I, uh, make a comment?
Of course. Please proceed, Commissioner Rader.
Thank you. Uh, so I wanna say Ms. Khan did a really great job of articulately echoing my concerns. Um, I really honed in on comment number one from ONGO Bravo's on really the absence of any mention of climate change in the report. So, um, from Ms. Lemon's explanation, I, I understand that more formal processes on addressing climate change are underway, uh, potentially difficult to, to develop an entire section on climate change where so much is fluxed. Um, but similar to what, uh, Commissioner Thompson just said, when I went through the document and did a word search, there's really no sentence, there's no language referencing climate change at all in the main document. Um, I think that because of the importance of, of climate change for the governor, the amount of work that's already been done to date, I would see it as very inconsistent recurrent state policy to put out a public-facing statewide report that doesn't include climate change at least as a framing principle of the plan. And so, you know, to kinda give an anecdote about my own work, um, as sustainability officer with the city of Albuquerque, I'm working across all the departments of, uh, of city government to make sure that reports that we're putting out, policies and programs, all incorporate sustainability and climate change. And so I personally do know that the state is doing the same thing, especially out of Energy, Minerals and Natural Resources Department. And so at the very minimum, I would recommend that staff work with, um, the Climate and Resilience Officer Laura Haber, um, some of those staffers, to at least develop some framing language, um, and potentially even assess in a, in a more in-depth way in lieu of having specific formal processes in NMED to address climate change in Surface Quality, Surface Water Quality Bureau, uh, processes that, um, even discussing and making sure that they're in alignment with, uh, statewide policy right now in government would be, uh, something that is, is important to this plan. Would be difficult for me to approve, um, a plan without any absence, without, with an absence of climate change across the board, um, just knowing that is a major priority of the governor.
Thank you, Commissioner Rader. Uh, I, I think that's a very well said. Um, Commissioners, anybody else? I'm sure you're out there.
Uh, Madam Chair, and may I, uh, this is Shelley Lemon. May I, uh, ask a question of Commissioner Rader on her comments?
Of course.
Yeah, to, to try to clarify, um, I, I was wondering where you would see that information in the document? Would it be in section one? Um, would it be sprinkled throughout? Like, how do you, I mean, eventually it'll be sprinkled throughout, but how do you envision us getting something that's not gonna take a lot of time, um, to implement and incorporating that into this document?
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. That's a great question. So I'm, I think that looking at section, at the introduction section and having a, you have a couple of these, uh, call-out sections that are lettered here, I think either developing a small section up in there at top or even looking at the purpose section and including an additional paragraph or two in there would be the most appropriate, would probably be the easiest. Um, you know, again, maybe like you said, even looking through, even having a small section that you discussed is in broad terms, uh, what current state policy is, maybe, uh, similar to what you've done with the public participation section at the bottom of the report, uh, that might be, um, another way to be able to incorporate climate change, uh, considerations in, in climate change policy for the state without having to, um, go into, into in-depth into details of the sort of development.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Lemon and Commissioner Rader. Uh, Commissioners, any, any other questions or, or further departments?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Kinnon.
Please proceed, Commissioner Kinnon.
I have two questions. Um, uh, the first I wanted to ask is the next phase of this going to the EPA. Uh, I am curious if there is expected or if it's been in the past that they do comments or edits or any sort of suggestive revisions to this. Will it then come back to the WQCC or, uh, any more review or approval of changes made to it?
Uh, Commissioner? Did you wanna go ahead and answer?
I can go ahead and try and answer this. Um, Commissioner Kinnon, I think what EPA has been part of the process, we've kept them in the loop as we've developed it. They provided comments during the public notice period and I wouldn't anticipate anything that would be dramatic. If there was something significant, we would definitely have to bring it back to the commission for them to approve. Um, if they were not significant typographical or formatting, um, or clarification, I think I would leave that up to the commission to determine at what level they would want to revisit this and discuss. Crystal, did you wanna answer that?
Yeah, I do. This is Crystal Weatherly. Um, I just wanted to make a note that, um, that the, that the federal statutes, um, require that, um, EPA review the water, review the approved water quality management plan. Um, but, um, that that is, that is the language that the statute uses. Uh, they have already participated in the, um, comment, um, process, but as, um, as Jennifer just said, if there were any significant changes that they would, um, want implemented, then this would have to, um, come back to the commission for approval.
All right. Thank you for that. Commissioner Kinnon, do you have some other comments, I think?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, thank you. My, my other question is just related to the, um, length of time that has passed since this was revised, uh, back in two thousand and eleven. Um, and if you have any, uh, explanation as to why that gap and how will ensure that that does not happen going forward and your suggestion of two-year updates, um, is that a certainty in the future?
Um, Madam Chair and Commissioner Kinnon, this is Shelley Lemon. Um, there are several different reasons for the length of time. We've gone through several different water quality standards coordinators, um, since the last revision and we also went through a triennial review process. Um, we've had other water quality standards revisions happen, um, during this time period. We have limited resources. Um, there are two people, uh, on staff at our bureau who work for all of our water quality standards amendments and issues. This includes the planning document that we're bringing forward today. Um, we started this process, like I said, in twenty seventeen and there have been, um, different priorities and initiatives that come along that we have to respond to, um, in order to send this forward to you today. Um, the anticipation, what we're setting our goal for is to have two-year revision, so it doesn't have to be as substantive of a revision or extensive of a revision next time. Um, another idea is to focus on certain sections, um, you know, every two-year cycle, so we're really toning in on certain areas, um, unless something dramatically changes with those other sections. So it is a goal, that's what we're aiming for. Um, we are doing the best we can with the resources that we have. We also have a triennial review process that we're initiating soon. Um, we have a couple third-party water quality standard amendments. We have a third-party ONW designation. So, um, it's, it's a lot of work for two people. And I think the amount of time was just the fact that it was extensive. We had the triennial review. Our last triennial review was initiated in twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen and was finalized in twenty seventeen. Um, so it, it's, um, it's complicated and I don't know if, uh, hopefully that answered your question.
Madam? Commissioners, Kinnon, if I can just add to that a little bit, I, I have to give Shelley and her program a little bit of a pat on the back here because the Surface Water Quality Bureau, uh, has been one of our most underfunded and understaffed bureaus, um, and they were cut dramatically, uh, over the eight years of, of the last administration. And we will be working very actively next week and during the special session to ensure that additional funding provided in the most recent regular session is preserved and so that we can allow them to address more things more quickly. But there's only so fast you can run these horses and they work really, really hard and lost an astonishing number of overtime hours in order to produce the things that they produce. So, um, we all wish they could do more and do it faster, but they, they really have significant, uh, and painful limitations and, um, the legislature is starting to listen to us. Uh, the governor's office is in full support of this program. So, uh, I just wanted to, uh, let you, let you know that, that we are actively working and have had some success in our efforts to get them more resources. Um, so, thank you for noting and supporting us, um...
Yeah, that, that, that's great. Um, thank you, Madam Chair and, uh, Ms. Lemon for that response. I think, yes, if there's anything that this commission can do to help support your efforts on that, um, I think that's the, the reason why I, I got that question is just, I think that you need to amplify the needs of these, um, different divisions to respond to the federal and, um, state changes that may be starting happening. Thank you for that response and, and...
Uh, Commissioners?
Um, Madam Chair, Larry Mangas.
Ms. Mangas, please proceed.
Yes, I'll, I'll follow up on, uh, Commissioner Kinnon's, uh, point that she brought up because, um, I was gonna touch on that, that same issue. I was gonna touch on that, that same issue. Well, if you're through the seventies, uh, things were updated on a fairly regular basis and, and then things seemed, uh, a take a lot there. Um, I appreciate the goal, uh, updating this every two years and encouraging the department to, to reach for that goal. I think one of the things that higher public comments that were received. So just not to speak for other Commissioners, uh, for the members of the public that commented. Um, personally, I read through the entire sixty-three pages of public comments and the department's thorough responses to those comments. So, uh, important, I think they were. It's a department's response to the comments I found comprehensive. Given that if this was up in a regular basis, I don't think the department would be faced with the volume of comments and then the commission would start to express a similar amount of homework to get through in order to, uh, approve a plan. So, uh, I just want to, as I know, so that the public knows that the commission knows where these, um, regardless of how excruciating it is. Um, but I think a, a regular schedule of times or, or updating the WQNT would be conducive for everybody involved. Um, fully understand the resource issue that all state agencies face. And then that's compounded for surface water given the unplanned things to get brought to the Surface Water Bureau that they have to deal with along with all the other plans. With that, that's all I have as a small, as a short answer.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. Would any other Commissioners like to ask any questions or make any comments?
David Cypher.
Please proceed, Commissioner Cypher.
I just wanted to echo Larry's comments. I was impressed as I read the thoroughness of the department's review of the comments. I also thought that, uh, they didn't seem to placate or minimize things that people were saying. They often, probably at least fifty percent of the time, uh, made changes to the documents. Uh, they, so they weren't in a defensive or a, uh, an ownership, um, an over-aggressive ownership position. I wanted to commend them, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioners Cypher, we appreciate that. Uh, Commissioners, anybody else?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner McWilliams.
Please proceed, Commissioner McWilliams.
I just wanted to say that, um, I also reviewed the public, or the comments submitted through the public process, and I agree that they seem to be well addressed. I think that one of the things that I would like to recommend to the Commissioner group is that we not, um, allow perfection to get away, get in the way of a good document. And I thought the document was updated very nicely and made some really good changes. So although we want to keep making, um, process improvements and good changes to the document, that we also consider the changes that have been made and, um, the quality of those.
Thank you, Commissioner McWilliams. Anybody else?
Well, um, I, I wanted to just, I have a couple of things that I wanted to, to note. Um, on the tribal outreach and the emails that you did, um, I understand that this was a while ago, but I just wanted to, and I, I know the Surface Water Quality Bureau is aware of this. But, um, for others on the call who might not be, the Environment Department has updated its tribal collaboration and coordination policy significantly and, and now provides for broader and more comprehensive outreach. So, uh, in response to requests from our tribal nations in New Mexico, a lot of them have requested that we not only reach out to environmental directors, but also to, uh, their chairs, presidents, um, and governors and others so that, uh, we cast a wide net and, uh, make sure that we provide every opportunity to, uh, give them, to allow them to give us, uh, comments on that. Um, and I have to, you know, I, I agree with, um, Ms. Khan and Commissioner Rader. In some ways, your thoroughness and the extensiveness of the, uh, public participation process here has sort of set you up to be in an outdated situation because when you started this in, in 2017 and, and early in your process, there wasn't a governor executive order. But, uh, I, I would, I find it difficult to adopt a plan now in the middle of 2020 that does not recognize and address the fact that we have a significant initiative and support both for, um, climate, addressing climate change mitigation and its adaptation, as well as the fact that we do have ongoing analysis and, and concern about, um, potential changes the department might need to make and recommend as a result of the waters of the US, um, changes and rules. So to me, um, it would be very appropriate in that introductory section. And, uh, I would leave it to you all if you felt there was another place to put in something. But to at least recognize the existence of those two major, major things that have happened in the, in the last year and a half that will have a significant, uh, impact on New Mexico's surface waters. And I completely understand you haven't had an opportunity to say what your actions would be. But this is a plan. So let's say that part of the plan is to look at, analyze, and potentially make recommendations as a result of those things. I, I think that, I, I think otherwise we're, we're adopting some, something that's, that's outdated and doesn't recognize the real world of today in the middle of 2020. So those are a few comments that I had. So does any other commi, is there, do you guys want to respond to that, or, or is there anything you want to add?
Madam Commissioner, this is Shelley Lemon. Um, there's nothing I would add. As we stated previously, um, at the beginning of the, this process, um, the commission can request changes to the document. We can incorporate those changes before, um, sending the document to EPA. So, um, adding, you know, some information in the introduction to recognize kind of change mitigation and adaptation or, um, so waters of the US, um, uncertainty. We can certainly look at adding some language in the introduction to that.
Thank you. Uh, any other?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, this is Howard Hutchinson.
Please proceed.
I realize that, uh, the Southwest goes through, uh, wide fluctuations in the climate. If we repeat the historic long-term droughts that have hit this area, sometimes lasting several centuries, uh, we will certainly see impacts to surface water quality. I'm, I'm wondering at what level of jurisdiction does the Water Quality Act give to the commission the abilities to address climate change? We can address changes to surface water quality through our use designations, um, standards that are applied to those uses. But they are in res, direct response to stream conditions. So I'm, I'm wondering if we are, if we are looking at, uh, a sustained change in the climate as historically has occurred in, in the various cycles, what would we be planning for other than doing what Surface Water Quality Division does now? Which is doing periodic reviews and, uh, samplings to determine the flows, to determine all of the various standards that we look at. Uh, I, I think if, if we are to look at that, then I don't see where the emphasis necessarily on putting into the planning document a, a climate change statement unless it's very broad to address the cyclical nature of climate shifts that affect New Mexico's surface water quality. So I, uh, I would hope that, that it, if we're placing a general statement about climate change into the preamble or the introduction of the document, that we recognize that climate change occurs. And we may see changes that bring us, uh, greater surface flows. Or we may see changes that diminish surface flows. We may see changes in timing of delivery of surface flows from, let's say, snow melt to monsoon events. Those kind of changes, I think, are already anticipated in all of the activities that the commission has jurisdiction over as far as assigning, again, uses and standards. So that's just a, a general comment, uh, Madam Chair. And, uh, I would like to see the, the language, uh, before we uh, go into a, a final decision on that language inclusion.
Uh, do any other Commissioners have comments or questions or, uh, before we turn to the discussion?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Rader.
Yes, Commissioner Rader, please proceed.
I understand that Commissioner Hutchinson points on, um, uncertainty in terms of the form that climate change will take on ecosystems throughout New Mexico and jurisdiction and specific abilities that the Water Quality Control Commission can take over those. Um, however, I just want to emphasize again, it's very important to establish climate change as a baseline of our scientific understanding in terms of how we respond to and understand uh, the changing conditions that we're currently and will continue to experience. I think at the very minimum, just establishing that this is, um, a part of our, a part of our overall approach as a state and is, and as the Water Quality Control Commission and the Surface Water Quality Bureau, um, is in and of itself, uh, very, I think very important to, uh, to remain, to remain consistent and to be responsive to, uh, the current and political, um, climate that we're living in.
Thank you, Commissioner Rader. And, and I can certainly respond, Commissioner Hutchinson. Again, I'm not suggesting that the Bureau put in this planning document any specific direction on actions to take. I'm asking and suggesting that they could put in an acknowledgement of the executive, executive order from the governor and the concern about climate change and its effects on New Mexico's surface water and indicate in their plan that they will be evaluating whether to propose or take any act. That it's the evaluation and the planning around that that I'm looking for, uh, to be responsive to the governor's orders and current concerns around climate mitigation and adaptation. I'm not asking them to say in this document now what actions they would take. And of course, they could only bring to the commission proposals or, um, petitions that fall within the commission's jurisdiction.
Madam Chair, this is Howard Hutchinson again. Um, you know, I, I, I've been in, involved in water quality issues, uh, particularly, uh, looking at, uh, delivery of water from our watersheds. And I believe that our watershed conditions, uh, respond to climate change, but they also respond to management decision of those lands. Our surface water delivery, the quantity of water that is delivered is directly dependent on the condition of those watersheds. And I, I think I've remained consistent for the years that I've been on the commission. The degraded condition of our watersheds are probably the greatest impact to surface water quality that we have in the state. Uh, while we're addressing, uh, climate change, and that may be a response to executive directives, but I also think that if we're going to look at a speculative issue, that we also address a real issue. And that is the condition of our watersheds. And that is, I think, I think the term is we're, about seventy-five percent of our water comes off of federally managed lands in the state of New Mexico. And some of the figures that I have seen is that we've lost about one-third of our water quantity delivery off of those lands. I don't believe that's due to climate change. I believe that has been through management decision of the federal land management agencies. We have not addressed that failure of management in our water quality decisions. And I think it's something that really needs to be, uh, looked at and evaluated. Uh, I, uh, I haven't seen much coming out of the state of New Mexico or the Water Quality Control Commission or the Surface Division addressing. or the Surface Division addressing, uh, that issue. We do have programs that address non-point source pollution. We do have watershed programs to address watershed restoration, but we have not placed the level of concern on that issue that I think really deserves a lot of attention. And I think as part of mitigation for the potential of entering into a long-term drought, that the watershed condition needs to be addressed head-on. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson. Uh, does anyone at the Surface Water, Water Bureau want to address that comment or suggest a place that concern could be placed in the two M E?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Hutchinson, this is Shelley Lemon. Um, what was suggested, and I think is probably the most appropriate place to mention climate change as it relates to water quality. I agree with Commissioner Hutchinson that this is a water quality-focused document and plan, um, would be in the introduction section. And we have, um, like I said previously, the department and the bureau currently works and undertakes things with climate change in mind. Um, it just didn't make it into the document. We can certainly add some information on that kind of change and water quality, um, nexus for folks, but it is something we think about when we are implementing our water quality management program. Um, and I understand the watershed coordination, uh, aspect of it and having a lot of federal lands in our state with watersheds and surface waters that we regulate and hopefully protect and restore. So, um, I think that a paragraph or maybe two paragraphs to talk about that issue would be certainly something that we could pull together and add to the introduction as kind of a overall change, um, consideration in this water quality management plan and continuing planning process.
Thank you, Shelley. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Would any brave commissioner be ready to make some kind of a motion?
Um, Madam Chair, before, uh, I have a nice touch.
Commissioner Dominguez, you're, you're, you're breaking up and freezing. Uh, would you try again, please?
Okay, yeah, I was uncertain where we made some questions to the administration and maybe there's sort of some word on that. So, I'll catch on, uh, stuff like that, Madam Chair. I don't know. The length of time to get this document, um, here's, I think, always been problematic because we're dealing with moving targets of what's happening of federally in, in the state. And that's, that's going to occur regardless of how quickly they get it done or what year we're in. So we're always going to be faced with that situation. Um, having been through a couple of fires at, at dates, uh, with the W two M P and with other matters that come before this commission. Um, typically when we have minor edits and we do some minor revisions, those approvals typically can be done as a whole. If we get into substantive revisions without seeing the language, I, from a couple of standpoints, not knowing what the language is and then having supported by some type of reasoning through the record of the change. So, and that's to, that's for backing for the commission legally. But I think this, this moves to a point. Right up there. Now, the, we can fine tune this document to death. Um, currently, I think, overall, this is a, a very solid document. I think the department has done a, a good job of trying to get their arms around a huge undertaking. My concern with, and it's not specific to suggestions that have been made by Commissioner Thompson or Commissioner Rader, it's from a standpoint that we're, what's been suggested is, uh, the Surface Water Quality Bureau take a look at making some alterations here and there. And if that's the case, then I do not see an alternative other than this would have to be brought back to the commission at a later date as a final document for the commission to approve. I would not be comfortable of approving something that's going to head out of an additional couple paragraphs or multiple paragraphs at the end because legally, I do not think that would stand tough if this was challenged. So, I think what we're faced with here in this, as your McWilliams point, this is a solid document. We can either approve it as is now and the department can make additional changes over the next two years or even a shorter timeframe if they're able to and bring it back. Or changes have to be made. Whether it has to go back out to public comment, I do not know. Counselor would have to tell us there. But the document would have to be provided to the commission ahead of time and brought back at a later date for approval because I do not think it's prudent for the commission to approve documents that are not a final document and we just given the department a general guidance to put something in there that maybe sort of fits this or that. So, that is kind of where I'm at with, if we're going the route, um, um, approving this, uh, today with the general guidance, uh, to the department. Hey, uh, I would have to, uh, just, I don't think that would be legal. Thank you, Michelle.
Um, Commissioner Dominguez, I'm sorry. You, your last sentence kind of broke up. I, I got something about you wouldn't be comfortable. So, I, I want to make sure I understand your thought, what you finally said in your summation. Would you mind, please, repeating that?
That, that if we're, if we're looking at approving this open-handed, then I do not think that I could vote in an affirmative on that because, um, I believe then the commission's approving a document that has not been finalized and I do not think that would hold up legally if challenged.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. And, and I, and I understand what you're saying, uh, Commissioner Dominguez. Um, would either, uh, any of the attorneys like to give us any advice if we do ask, uh, the bureau to come back with some revised language, say, at the next meeting or meeting after that to, to implement the, the items we would like added to the introduction or some discussion? Would that necessitate another round of public comment? Or would that be, uh, us responding to the last round of public comment?
Um, Madam Chair, this, and Commissioner, this is Crystal Wetherly. Um, it's my thought that, um, it would not, um, instigate the other round of public comment but that these comments are, um, in response to the, um, current draft. I think it would have to be, um, considered, um, who would review the changes that were recommended by, um, the commission and whether or not that would be a review done by the commission as a whole again or by council? And, um, and how that would be, um, brought back to the commission here, um, in, as a presentation at a, a meeting or, um, reviewed, um, uh, based on the comments that, um, were given and, um, and reviewed by, uh, council? So, um, I hope that answered some of it. And I'm, I'm, um, sure that Council of Justice may have some input on that.
I, I, I'm confused, Crystal. So, you, you're saying that if we had, if we asked the bureau to come back with changed language, that will get reviewed by commission, council, rather than the whole commission?
Uh, uh, my thought that that would have to be decided now, how you want to review the changes that would be implemented into the plan.
Okay. I think, I think I, I think I'm understanding that. Um, and I, I guess a- at this point, it would be helpful to hear from a commissioner, either, it sounds like we have two options here. Either, uh, ask the bureau to come back at the net, at the aug- July or the August meeting with some language incorporating and whatever we wanted incorporated would have to be listed for commission review or would I need a motion that we approve it the way it is? So, I think, uh,
Um, Chair, I just want to clarify that, um, that it would be my, there seems to be a question about whether or not you would approve it, vote on it today, and, and then implement changes or request that the changes be made and then it brought back to you and voted on at that time. So, um, that, uh, the latter seems to be the more appropriate, um, mechanism for, uh, approval.
I, I, I agree. I, I've heard from several commissioners that they would be uncomfortable just sending back an open-ended direction to you all. And, and, and I, I appreciate that. I'm just trying to get, I'm tossing out our options here and trying to generate a motion.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Rader. I would make a motion to request that we send the Water Quality Management Plan back to the, uh, Surface Water Quality Bureau for revision to discuss and, uh, review it at a later meeting.
Do we have a second to that?
This is Gabriel Wade. I will second that.
Um, okay, so now we can discuss it. I want to make sure, uh, we're very clear on exactly which comments and matters that we want addressed. Um, do you think you could, uh, amend or clarify your motion, uh, Commissioner Rader?
Madam Chair, for the best of my ability, um, so I believe that we will be asking the, the Surface Water Quality Bureau to make amendments to the introduction section regarding, um, the impact of surface water management and its impact on watersheds in accordance with the comments made by, uh, Commissioner Hutchinson. Um, in addition, we are also asking for, um, an acknowledgement and a summary of current state policy that has been issued by the governor in regards to, uh, mitigation and adaptation measures for climate change, um, in part of the, in the, in the, uh, introduction section as well and the purpose. And, uh, I believe that there are some other comments that I don't, that I don't have adequate, uh, notes on from, uh, Commissioner Hutchins, or, excuse me, uh, from Commissioner, uh, Thompson and from Commissioner Timmons. Um, I would ask that they, um, share those, uh, those final comments as well before we proceed on the motion.
All right. We're looking at a mul- multiple amendment.
This is, uh, Commissioner Thompson. Yes, my comments pertain to, uh, what I perceive to be or suggestions that additional attention be given to the MS four permit process, particularly, um, with respect to the Middle Rio Brand.
Okay. I think I'm going to number these. One is going to be watershed effect as mentioned by Commissioner Hutchinson. Two is going to be climate change mitigation, adaptation and the governor's, uh, executive order. Three is going to be the MS four permit process, especially in reference to the Middle Rio Brand. Um, that was three. Four is going to be, uh, for me, um, potential effects of federal changes to Waters of the U.S. rules, uh, and planning and analysis on the impacts of that on New Mexico's surface waters. And I think, uh, are there any others, commissioners, you want to see addressed in the next draft? Okay, um, I'm, I'm going to take a chance here and, and see if we, uh, vote to adopt. We're not voting to adopt. We're sending back the, uh, the plan to the bureau. Uh, bureau, if, if this motion passes, uh, would you prefer that we have you come back with this to our July meeting or our August meeting?
Um, Madam Chair, this is Shelley Lemon. Um, I don't know when we will be able to come back with this amended version. Um, we currently have several different actions that we are working on. Um, and as I discussed, our resources are limited. I don't think we will be able to come back in July. Um, it also affects the public participation aspect of those actions that are in progress. Um, it's, it's something I, I'm not a hundred percent sure I can give you an answer on right now.
Okay, then we won't put a time, uh, in that, in that motion. Um, so, uh, maybe we'll go bold and see about voting on this with all four of those things in it. Uh, if that motion doesn't pass, I guess I'll suggest we vote on each of the four amendments individually. Does that work? Can someone give me some, uh, Robert's Rules of Orders advice? Does that work? Can someone give me some, uh, Robert's Rules of Orders advice? First, we vote on the amendments, all four, or one at a time?
Madam Chair, this is Howard Hutchinson. I, I think, um, we should go forward, uh, voting on the inclusion of all four.
All right, so we're gonna vote on the motion with all four of the amendments, correct? Uh, Cody, would you please read the roll, and we'll hear that out?
Uh, Madam Chair, could you kind of repeat, or re-exactly what the motion is?
The motion is to send, uh, the document back to the surface water and ask them to bring back to us specific language changes for our review and adoption on watershed effects, uh, that, that, on, uh, surface water quality and planning for, for those, uh, concerns about climate mitigation and adaptation, and the governor's executive order, and, uh, the Bureau's planned efforts to analyze those for effects on surface water. The MS4 permit process and its effects, especially on the Rio Br- Middle Rio Brand area, and how or if those will be, uh, worked into the planning for surface water in the future, and an acknowledgement of the changes to the federal Waters of the U.S. regulations, and any ongoing planning and analysis of those impacts on New Mexico's surface water. Did I miss anything?
Madam Chair, that's all to be placed in the introduction, is that correct?
That's my suggestion, and that's what I heard in the amendments. All right, Mr. Barnes, you wanna call the roll?
Yeah, certainly. Okay, Commissioner Cendaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
No.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
No.
Commissioner Musserafi?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Madam Chair Pruitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Wader?
Yes.
Commissioner Siper?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
No.
And Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes ten to three.
All right, thank you. Uh, that took us considerably longer than anticipated. Um, I would ask also, um, Ms. Weatherly, when you all come back to us with that, please come back with a revised and more detailed order that, um, provides citations to the federal and state authority and gives clarity on what the governor approval and designee path and process is. That would be really helpful. Um, I suggest, since we have a couple more items on our, our agenda, that we take just a quick five-minute break, 'cause we have been hard at it for more than two and a half hours. Um, so why doesn't everybody put on their mute button, go get some more coffee, stretch their legs, or whatever they need to do? Uh, I have eleven thirty-seven. Why don't we come back at eleven forty-five, please? So we'll be in recess until then. Uh, the public, are we back? Looks like we have a lot of people. I don't see Commissioner Thompson or McWilliams.
I'm here.
Okay, maybe I'll have Cody call the roll again, just to make sure we have, uh, it's eleven forty-seven, I'll make sure we have a quorum of commissioners now that we've come back from our quick break.
Okay, go on. Um, Commissioner Cendaria?
Here.
Commissioner Ferton?
Here.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Here.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Here.
Commissioner McWilliams?
I'm here.
Commissioner Musserafi?
Here.
Commissioner Patton?
Here.
Madam Chair Pruitt?
Here.
Commissioner Wader?
Here.
Commissioner Siper?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Timmons?
Here.
And Commissioner Wade?
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum now.
Fantastic. Thank you, everybody, for coming back promptly. I, I imagine people's stomachs are starting to grumble. Um, so we are now on agenda item number six, motion for recording of rulemaking hearing, WQCC twenty dash oh seven R, um, with a proposed revisions for twenty point seven point five NMAC wastewater facility construction loans. Um, I am the hearing officer on this matter. Well, this motion came in, um, as a result of conversation with commission, council, we thought it would be best if, uh, we brought this for a decision of the full commission, rather than just me on my own. So, um, that's why we're here. And Chris Atencio, counsel for NMED IC, hello, Chris. Would you like to go ahead and present your motion to the commission?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just wanted to say good morning, and thank you all for your time in considering this motion. Uh, I'm representing the Construction Programs Bureau, who, if you recall, submitted a petition to amend the wastewater facility construction loan regulations found at twenty point seven point five NMAC. That hearing is currently scheduled for July fourteenth, um, uh, before the court's permission to consider those amendments. Um, just a kind of a brief summary of the contents of the motion. Bureau is asking that, uh, for this particular hearing, a electronic recording, excuse me, be allowed for this hearing, rather than, uh, a verbatim transcript, uh, by a court reporter. Uh, this is allowed by the procedural regulations from one, twenty point, excuse me, from one point six, from two oh three, uh, where, uh, on the order of the hearing officer, a, a electronic recording can be made, uh, rather than a verbatim, uh, transcript. Uh, the Bureau highlights that, uh, to date, there has been no, um, public interest or interest in participation in the hearing that it has received or heard. There's no indication of any other notices of intent likely to be filed. And the Bureau also submitted with this motion, uh, a, a invoice for a cost of a court reporter indicating that, over the time that this, uh, hearing is likely to take, it would cost up, uh, close to a thousand dollars for, uh, the Bureau to, uh, get a, uh, retain a court reporter's make of a verbatim transcript, uh, within, it'll see the cost for, uh, the copies to, to whoever asks for those. Uh, and, 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 and the Bureau concluded that, um, within a, the electronic audio recording and because of lack of interest, um, the shortness of the, the time, uh, that a electronic recording should be sufficient to preserve, uh, the record of the hearing as required by both state law that and the, uh, rulemaking regulations. Uh, so with that, uh, I respect the request that the commission grants that motion, uh, and allows electronic recording, uh, which I believe can be done, uh, with equipment that the hearing office has. And I will stand for any questions that, uh, the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Atencio. Commissioners, any questions?
Madam Chair, this is Howard Hutchinson.
Mr. Hutchinson?
I would move to approve the motion for the electronic recording of the rulemaking hearing, WQCC twenty dash seven R, proposed provisions to twenty point seven point five NMAC.
Madam Chair?
Uh, just, just a minute, counsel, do we have a second for that motion?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner McWilliams. I will second that motion.
Okay, now, thank you. Uh, we have a motion, and a second, we'll go to discussion. Uh, Commissioner Counsel, I, I think you might, you have something you wanted to say on this matter.
You know, my, my, thank you, Madam Chair. My preference would have been to be allowed to be heard prior to there being a motion, uh, uh, considered, but nonetheless, uh, let me begin, first of all, stating that, um, and I'm calling the commission's attention to paragraph one of the motion. That's actually a misstatement of the regulation. Twenty point one point six point three oh three A, in fact, reads in this manner. Unless specified by the commission, or the hearing officer, a verbatim transcript shall be made of the hearing, including any deliberations. Perhaps because of the emphasis or focus of the motion, uh, counsel did not include a reference to the fact that it can be specified by the commission. Uh, the, the central main assertion of this motion really is that the, and this is paragraph three in the motion, that the NMED may be required, and that's speculative because we don't know what that contract actually will be. Uh, I don't think the topic of the motion that was included in the packet includes exhibit, but my recollection is it was a, a, a invoice from a prior, a prior transcription by a court reporter, and that was, as I recall, WQCC number nineteen forty-six, which, if the commission will recall, dealt with the, uh, of one wastewater treatment plan, uh, case. It, it may well be that from the, uh, from the viewpoint, and our, our reporting may be adequate for legislative purposes, and I, and I vote from the motion and that obtaining a statement may be an unnecessary cost. Unfortunately, that motion is entirely from the perspective of the department and not from the commission. Let me go back to, if, if we're gonna talk about precedent, this, this particular petition is brought before the commission for sorts of twenty-one, uh, twenty point one point six NMAC, which are the, which are the rulemaking procedures for the water quality control commission. It is exactly the same rulemaking procedures under which the prior case that I made reference to was brought before the commission, which was the proposed amendments to twenty point six point four NMAC, establishing a new contemporary standards, again, if the commission will recall, that was, excuse me. That was the one wastewater treatment plan. And Mr. DeHill asserts in his motion that there has been little indication of public interest. That, that may well be actually, um, um, a snummer. I think what we have here is a little indication, little indication of public opposition. Uh, if you recall, in the case that I cited, which was nineteen forty-six R, there, uh, we, I suppose could have said that there was little public interest. That wasn't the case. I think there was little public opposition. If the commission will recall, we only had two people speak in that particular, a public hearing, and that was the ma- the city manager for Raton and the manager of the wastewater treatment plant. I think it's incorrect to say that in this particular case, uh, matters relating to the wastewater facility construction loan regulations are of little public interest. I think quite the opposite is true. What we have here is really a little indication of public opposition. But, a- and, and let me say that, back to going, or going back to the precedent, in WQCC nineteen forty-six, there was no motion made by the commission, or rather, by the NMED to have an electronic recording. Quite the opposite happened. Not only did we have the actual proceeding or hearing recorded, we had the deliberations transcribed as well. So when we look at two cases, both of which are governed by twenty-one point six, we have that precedent where there was an actual transcription made, not only of the proceeding, but of the deliberations. And then let me speak to, to the motion from, from a very practical, uh, point of view. And this, again, is from the perspective of the commission and not, excuse me, the department. What, what, what the department is essentially proposing and, and suggesting or proposing an electronic record, is here's what it would entail. If, by, by statute, both the hearing officer and, or regulation, rather, both the hearing officer and the commission are, have to look to the transcript to make their findings affect, or in, in, in the order and statement of reasons, and that, when I think of statement of reasons, I really think on the findings of fact. While the hearing officer and the commission, which is really Chairman Pruitt and my colleague, were actually carrying that very extensive document that sets out the statement of reasons or finding the fact for the action that the commission takes, we really need to have a transcription. If we have only an electronic recording, what we're going to be faced to do, basically, is there has to be an index lock prepared, and what, what we'll have to do in, in citing to reasons by the commission or articulations of, of findings by the commission, is we'll have to go to the beginning of the audio record, the electronic recording, and basically run the electronic recording up to the point where we have that particular citation that we're wanting to include in the statement of reasons. And the way we do that is by, at last time, we're saying, you know, uh, ten minutes, twenty-five seconds have passed from the inception of the recording to the point where we want to cite. As a practical matter, that's really hard to do, and that burden will fall on the hearing officer as he or she, um, prepares her, her report, he, the, the hearing officer's report. And that burden will certainly fall on Chairman Pruitt and I as counsel for the commission when we have to pair, prepare the order and statement of reasons. Uh, so, so again, from the perspective of the commission's work, uh, the motion, I think, is, is inappropriate, and, and I request that, really, the commission rethink the granting of that motion, particularly, uh, for, for the reasons that I've stated. Thank you.
Um, Counsel Sanchez, you may speak for yourself, but I do not see this as a burden on myself as a hearing officer. This is not a matter in which a hearing officer typically writes a hearing officer report, and I do not plan to write one. And I have already, as hearing officer, directed that, uh, counsel for NMED prepare a proposed order and statement of reasons. And I expect that, uh, Mr. Atencio will provide us with a detailed order with, uh, all needed citations. I, I would remind the commission that in this rulemaking matter, all testimony must be prefiled, and all exhibits must be prefiled. The commission has the opportunity to read all of those well before the hearing, and we usually do. And I, I, I think it would be easy to cite to those. But first, I- But first, I would like to give, uh, Mr. Tencio an opportunity, uh, to respond to your comments and, uh, how the, uh, and I would also like to give Commissioners who have been on the Commission far longer than I to comment on the Commission's practices in the past on this. So, Mr. Tencio, why don't you go first, and then I'll see if Commissioners have anything to say about this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, and as the Commission, uh, for allowing a chance to respond, um, I think initially, I, I appreciate Mr. Sanchez's, uh, comments as Counsel of the Commission. Uh, I think a lot of those comments read, uh, essentially as, um, opposition to the motion rather than a, a review of legal proficiency, uh, or the authority of the Commission to, uh, to grant this motion. Um, because of that, and, and because it seems more of a, uh, navigating an opposition of the motion, uh, I note that there, there's lots of references to think in some position as to, uh, whether there is interest or opposition, however they appear in this hearing, that there's been no evidence presented, uh, of existence of any interest in this hearing, rather than the, the position that there's enough to warrant a verbatim transcript. Uh, I'd also note that, uh, I, I'm unaware of any, of the reasoning as to Counsel for the, the previous hearing that was mentioned, why a determination was made to not, uh, request the electronic recording for that hearing. Um, I, I was not involved in that, um, but, uh, I don't know that it's appropriate for Counsel's decision in that hearing to, uh, be presidential and bind, uh, the, the Department's hands in this particular instance. Uh, I think based on the arguments that were made, uh, it, it would seem that, um, an electronic hearing, uh, electronic recording of a, of a hearing would never be handled by any Hearing Officer, but that seems to be inconsistent with the regulation that specifically provides other options, as well as the State Law Act. Uh, and, and lastly, I would, uh, conclude, uh, Madam, uh, and Chair, and the Commission, that, that you are correct, uh, the Department will be getting a proposed statement of reasons and, um, will include citations to all the tracks on the record, both the evidence, uh, the exhibits submitted, the written testimony that will be prefiled, uh, as well as any, uh, time markers on the recording as appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Tencio. Do any other Commissioners, uh, like to address past practices or, or, uh, have any comments on this motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I, I, at some point, I'd like an opportunity to respond to your comments and those of Counsel as well, and I'll be glad to wait, uh, till after, um, we have the benefit of some historical perspective, but I would like to address, uh, both your comments and those of, uh, Counsel for the Department.
All right, well, we'll, uh, defer that for a bit. Thank you. Commissioners?
Uh, Madam Chair, this is Larry Dominguez.
Commissioner Dominguez, please proceed.
Um, I, I couple of things. Let me start out with one quick question for Mr. Tencio, and this goes directly to the motion, uh, and I may be reading this incorrectly, but I think I see two conflicting dates there. Up towards the top, it indicates July fourteenth, um, of when this is scheduled for, but down under October fourth, it seems to indicate June eight, which maybe I'm missing something there.
Commissioner Dominguez, uh, Madam Chair, thank you for pointing that out. There was a, uh, overlooked echo on my part. I prepared this motion, uh, prior to, um, the, the public authors being issued and the resulting delays, and revised prior to that, but I must have missed that, that part in paragraph four. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tencio. Yeah, well, it's, uh, and I, that was my assumption when I read, uh, so, uh, I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that. Thank you for that. Uh, going to the issue at hand, uh, historical, um, the, you know, historically speaking, probably most, most hearing, rulemaking hearings are done with a court reporter and... But I think we're also in two situations of what I see here is we're in changing times and doing things telephonically has some additional challenges for a court reporter for transcribing a hearing is one thing, as well as the top side of this. Uh, I speak of that from the standpoint that just the past two weeks, uh, the agency I worked for has had this exact same discussion, and looking at paths forward for handling certain rulemaking hearings. So, um, precedent is one thing, but I also think as a Commission, we have to be able to look at how we adapt with these changing times as we move forward. So I think the only real primary thing to focus on is do we have legal authority to do this? Um, I'll grant the Commission's counsel that as the motion's currently written, it does have, uh, described twenty point one point six, three, six point three oh three A verbatim. However, if you do look at the language of three oh three, as I read it, the Commission does have authority to alter the course there under the language of three oh three, and that's, um, that's what I was hoping to just hear from Commission Counsel, was whether the Commission has legal authority to do that, um, versus a dissertation. So, um, I think the Commission has legal authority. I think the Commission needs to be adaptable to changing times. I think it is a case-by-case basis, and looking at, um, the public's involvement with this up to this point, there are not sixty-three pages of public comments. So, I, I think we do have to look at this on a case-by-case basis, and it does sound like a prudent approach. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, this is Howard Hutchinson.
Please proceed, Commissioner Hutchinson.
I, I've listened, uh, to the arguments about this. I, I don't offer any recollection of, of, uh, having a recorded hearing in my years on the Commission. Uh, I would like to note for my fellow Commissioners and Madam Chair, that my motion was not to grant the motion, but my motion was to allow for the electronic recording. So with that, I think I would like to call for the question.
Uh, Commissioner Hutchinson, while I appreciate that, I did promise Counsel Sanchez an opportunity to respond to Mr. Tencio and Commission comments. I feel bound to give him that opportunity. I would ask that you keep your comments brief, Counsel.
Madam Chair, this is Howard Hutchinson again. I will, will move my call for the question and allow him to answer.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson. Counsel Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'll try to be brief here as to your point that, um, Counsel for the Department will submit a proposed order and statement of reasons. If you will recall, that was done in nineteen forty-six R as well, and we had to do a major rewrite. Uh, with respect to your, uh, reference to prefiled statements in support of the rulemaking, uh, please keep in mind that those prefiled statements do not include the discussions and deliberations of the Commission. We would not be able to reference those, uh, those discussions or deliberations, uh, using prefiled statements. Uh, Mr. Tencio, going to Mr. Tencio's comments, uh, he objects to, uh, to my, uh, my character reservation of, uh, that there is not little public interest and supposed legal opposition on the basis, uh, uh, that I offer no support for that. I would remind him that this isn't an evidentiary hearing, uh, and likewise, he did not offer any, uh, evidentiary proof of his statement that there was little public interest in the matter. And I think it's simply a misstatement of the law that, uh, this somehow, uh, the requirement of, or, or allowance for electronic, uh, recording somehow would be valid of a state law, of the State Rules Act. State Rules Act simply doesn't speak to that at all. And if I can address, uh, Commissioner Dominguez's, uh, statement, if, if you look at the language in twenty point one point six point three oh three A, actually the verbatim transcript is the default provision, because it speaks of, unless specified by the Commission or the Hearing Officer, a verbatim transcript shall be made. So, uh, Commissioner Dominguez, you're correct that it is within the prerogative of the Commission to change the default provision, if you will, and, and, uh, rather than a verbatim transcript, an electronic transcript. But I think it's important to put in context, uh, other parts of, excuse me, the twenty point one point six point three oh three. If we look at, um, the language in, paragraph three of twenty point one point six point three oh three, it does, it appears to contemplate a standard graphic recording of the proceedings, because it says, "Any person may obtain a copy of the transcript of proceedings. It shall be obtained directly from the court reporter, and the contents of the transcript shall be taken directly to the source." So clearly, that contemplates a written transcription, a verbatim transcription. And also, if you look at twenty point one point six three oh six B, it reads, "If the Commission does not reach a decision at the conclusion of the hearing, the Commission administrator following receipt of the transcript will promptly furnish a copy of the transcript to its Commission members had they not attend the hearing." Uh, so I think if we read in perimateria, if we read the entire regulation as a whole, I think it contemplates a verbatim transcript. Thank you.
Are you, are you finished, Mr. Sanchez? Your, your mute button?
I, 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 I guess finished. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I'm expecting to see your mute button. There we go. Um, uh, Mr. Tencio, do you have anything to say about that?
Madam Chair, uh, I, I think I would note, uh, in the motion in terms of public interest, uh, we did reference Ms. Kale's, um, discussion at the petition hearing, uh, in which the Commission granted this petition for rulemaking, uh, in which, uh, Kale was available to provide any, um, uh, evidence requested or stamp of question as to, uh, the level of public interest. Um, I think in terms, excuse me, I'm starting to get my mute button. Uh, in terms of whether the, the rulemaking regulations speak to appropriate transcripts, I think under the reasoning by Commission Counsel, uh, the unless specified by Commission or Hearing Office for language, uh, by that reasoning would be essentially rendered a nullity, uh, because the only option under his reasoning would be a transcript, a verbatim transcript for proceedings, which, uh, is, is, is not contemplated with that language unless, uh, and then turning to the State Law Act, which, uh, excuse me, my head is open here and this is, said, uh, there we go. Uh, under fourteen dash four dash five point four, um, Agency Record and Rulemaking hearings, "The rulemaking record shall contain, uh, any official transcript of a public rule hearing, or if not transcript, any audio recording, a verbatim transcript, any memorandum commemorating the content of the hearing prepared by the Hearing Officer, and should be official or valid over the hearing." So I think it's very clear in the State Rules Act, uh, that the idea of electronic recordings is contemplated, uh, and I think as the session has said, on a case-by-case basis is certainly appropriate, uh, and in this case, uh, there, it seems a unnecessary cost or an exercise to do a verbatim transcript in the, uh, electronic recording or due supervision.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioners, any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, uh, let's have a vote on this. So, uh, the, uh, vote is on Commissioner Hutchinson's motion to allow an electronic temp, uh, recording of the upcoming rulemaking hearing, WQCC number twenty dash oh seven R, on the, uh, water, wastewater facility construction loan, twenty point seven point five NMAC.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Candelaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Therton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Commissioner Muschirafi?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Chair Pruitt.
I'm going to abstain from voting on this one since I'm the Hearing Officer.
Commissioner Reeder?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tennants?
Patton.
And Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Any motion passus?
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Tencio, would you please get me an order on this, uh, approving the use of the electronic transcript at your earliest convenience, hopefully by the end of the week?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. That would be great, and I am confident that you will be submitting a very robust, uh, order and statement of reasons with lots of citations to ensure it is not a burden on us to, um, do whatever we decide to do at the July hearing on your rulemaking. Thank you.
Yes, indeed, Madam Hearing Officer.
Thank you. All right. So let's move to number seven, which is update on the New Mexico Supreme Court and Court of Appeals and Court of Appeals decisions on A one, CA thirty-six oh three nine, Rio Hondo Land and Cattle Company LP and Wild Earth Guardian versus New Mexico Water Quality Control Commission and the New Mexico Environment Department in the matter of final total maximum daily load for the Rio Ruidoso. Approval date, November twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen. The commission is not gonna take any action on this, but, um, anytime there is a Supreme Court, uh, ruling, uh, on, on a commission case, I think it's helpful if we get some information on what the various courts have said on the matter and if, if there's, uh, anyone has any suggested lessons for the commission to learn, uh, for future actions and thoughts. So this was long before my time. I thought perhaps maybe, uh, Commissioner Dominguez uh, and/or counsel might want to, uh, just advise, uh, on this matter and, and perhaps summarize it, uh, or any other commissioners that have any recollection or involvement in this.
Um, Madam Chair, Commissioner Dominguez. Um, I guess I'll get the ball rolling, um, after I wrap up, uh, this, um, I don't think we're gonna try to get too deep into the legal aspects of this. It was more, uh, kind of what we learned at it, yes. Um, I think it's the important part, more so than the, the legal process. Um, and, um, for fellow commissioners, uh, this did start a long time ago. Uh, and the chair had asked me to speak to it because I was commission chair at the point in time that this came up in twenty sixteen. So I'll run through, uh, a couple of quick things on the process and then a few takeaways from it. And we'll try to do this as quickly as possible because I know today's strikeout, um, much longer than any other start. So, um, this was a total maximum daily load that was brought before the commission in the latter part of twenty sixteen. Uh, the commission, uh, received the draft TMDL from the department. The department, uh, presented the TMDL at the commission meeting. Uh, there was public comment, I think both written and verbally at the commission meeting. And after all of that and questioning from commissioners, uh, there was an approval of the TMDL with some minor, uh, revisions. So, um, somewhat standard process for TMDLs. Uh, once approved, then, uh, a TMDL can move to EPA for approval. Um, after the commission's approval, it was appealed by a couple of parties to the Court of Appeals. I think you received, uh, notice of appeal in your package as well as the Court of Appeals, um, ruling on that. Um, as you see, the, the Court of Appeals ruling did not occur until the latter part of twenty nineteen. So these are very long drawn out process. Uh, through that process, uh, legal steps where the petitioner files briefings, uh, permission through counsel from Attorney General's office as well as Environment Department as an intervener uh, did their part on filing briefs, uh, and filing on behalf of the commission. So Court of Appeals heard it. Without going into details on that, the Court of Appeals upheld the commission's, uh, ruling. And, and I believe, if that's correct, in there, uh, was a motion for sorcery that went to the Supreme Court that was denied, which then pushed it back down, uh, and the Court of Appeals, uh, pushing this back to the department or to the commission for any action, which saying that there was, um, no further action necessary since it was upheld, well, it's, it's closed. So with that briefly said, I think some of the takeaways, and this was, uh, some things that are just going through my mind. And we, we as in this commission does a lot of TMDL on a normal basis. It's routine items that come before us and to some degree, they, they may almost seem that way of, quote, being routine. I think the fact that this was appealed to the Court of Appeals points out the fact that the commission cannot take for granted that something is routine. And with that, that said, I'll go further into that. Uh, this particular TMDL, like many other ones, was pretty complex and lengthy. I believe totally, it was about a hundred and thirty-six pages of either the TMDL or appendices. So it's very in-depth document that the Environment Department presented to the commission. Um, and that, that's gathered from two standpoints. It, it shows the amount of work that the department puts into TMDLs, but it also provides the substantial evidence that the commission relies upon to approve or not approve TMDL. So, um, even though these may seem routine at times, I think it's critical that the commission read and evaluate thoroughly items such as this TMDL before the department presents it to us so that if there are questions, concerns, issues that the commission has, those get flushed out when the department presents and the commission questions the department about it so that whatever the end result is, it's been thoroughly evaluated. And the draft so that whatever is on the record substantiates and upholds the commission's actions. So I, I don't wanna sound like I'm just getting on a soapbox and, and preaching, but, uh, two things here, I think it, it serves that if the commission does our job properly, it withstands the scrutiny of the court system. I think on the flip side, it also points out that we talk a lot about public participation and opportunities the public has for other courses of action. So there's public participation prior to the hearing and as you can see, there's opportunities they have after the commission's actions. And I think over the years, for some of us that have been around the block a time or two, we have seen the avenue of Court of Appeals as at times become a standard process for some entities. So with that given, I think that puts a greater pressure on this body that we make sure that we come to these meetings fully briefed, fully prepared, and we, through deliberations, work out all of the issues so that any of our rulings will uphold, uh, the scrutiny of the court system. So, um, Madam Chair, I will relinquish, uh, the soapbox and if there's questions the commission has, I'll probably answer those. Uh, I think those were a few takeaways that I have from this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. I always appreciate, uh, your analysis and historic perspective and, uh, thank you for that. Um, Counsel Sanchez, is there anything you wanna add about that decision?
Well, I, I'll, I'll be very brief. Um, I think Counsel, uh, or rather Commissioner Dominguez essentially correctly capped the, the procedural, uh, up and down on the case. Uh, just really quickly, you, the notice of appeal was filed in twenty sixteen. It took quite a bit for the Court of Appeals to issue an opinion. I think it's noteworthy that the Court of Appeals did not publish a full-blown opinion on the appeal. Rather, they issued a relatively short, as, uh, opinions go, twelve-page memorandum of opinion. Um, so that, that tells us something about how ready the Court of Appeals thought the appeal was. Uh, it then went up on the Rio Hondo didn't, wasn't happy with the memorandum of opinion of the Court of Appeals. It went up on a petition for writ of cert to the Court of, to the Supreme Court. Uh, on the Supreme Court reviewed it and summarily denied the petition for writ of cert, sent it back down on a mandate to the Court of Appeals. Uh, the mandate, um, just in terms of, uh, the time lapse from the initial filing of the appeal in twenty sixteen, the mandate issued just, um, a couple, a few weeks ago. And I, I think the, I, I really wanna commend Commissioner Dominguez for, for his wisdom. Uh, I think it's really important that, uh, whatever the commission does, it's, uh, even if it may appear routine, it's really, really important that the commission always has an eye toward the potential of a, uh, a subsequent, uh, appeal or judicial scrutiny. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Do any commissioners have any comments or questions about this decision? Okay, I'll assume everybody's about to keel over, uh, and faint from hunger. Um, I would note, uh, item eight, Open Meetings Act Resolution and Correction of Commission Administrator Email. Um, I, there does not, I believe, need to be any action on this one. Counsel advised, uh, that this was a non-substantive matter. Um, we created a generic email for the commission administrator and, uh, initially that email was tuv dot facilitation at state dot N M dot U S on advice from our Information Technology Bureau here that, uh, it, we couldn't have the full name because of limitations on characters. Um, as it, and that was the email we put in our Open Meetings Act Resolution that the commission passed earlier in the year. Uh, as it turned out, I, I P then actually did change, uh, the email to make it public dot facilitation at state dot N M dot U S. So, uh, we needed to put the correct, corrected email address in that, uh, Open Meetings Act Resolution which Counsel advised was a non-substantive correction, not really an amendment that the commission needs to vote on. So just wanted to alert you all to that and remind you that the reason we needed to do that is because this will be Commission Administrator Cody Barnes' last meeting with us. He is leaving the department July tenth, shortly before our next meeting. Uh, Cody has done an absolutely awesome and fantastic job and, uh, kind of been a ray of sunshine for us in the, uh, Environment Department and all the boards and commissions he services as well as the agency hearings. He's basically done the job of two people for the last, uh, year and a half. And we've really appreciated our time with you, Cody. We wish you all the best in your adventures in law school. And, uh, I would encourage, uh, commissioners to email Cody thanks, notes of thanks and appreciation, um, because he has been a champ. Thank you, Cody. Our next
Howard Hutchinson. Um, I would like also to commend Cody's, uh, preparation of our meetings and recordings minutes. Um, I think he has, uh, gotten a good start on administrative law, uh, being oversight of these meetings. And, uh, Cody, good luck.
Madam Chair, may I, uh, offer a comment?
Yes, of course, counsel.
We, we all see the tremendous amount of work that Cody does, um, beforehand for all these meetings, what he does during the meetings, what he does subsequent meetings. But what a lot of you don't see, or perhaps any of you don't see, is, uh, the work that he does when action taken by the commission is appealed as we were just discussing in the previous matter, to an appellate court. Um, I now have, I'm now handling a couple of cases before the Court of Appeals in which action taken by the commission was appealed. Uh, just by way of example, one of the things Cody did in preparing the record proper, he actually prepared, and for those of you that, that know about, uh, bites and bits and all that other stuff, he was preparing a record proper that was sixty-four data bites worth of record proper. And Cody, and I spent endless number of hours just going through the actual documents. Cody does a tremendous amount of putting all that information into a, a proper index and into a very large thumb drive. Uh, so Cody's been absolutely wonderful. I wish him the best. Uh, I'll, I'll give him all my Gilbert summary. That way he can, uh, just breeze through law school. Cody, thank you.
Thank, thank you. I'll send a very kind word. I definitely appreciate it. And some wonderful working. Where's them for you all?
Well, thank you, Cody. Um, so our next meeting, uh, is Tuesday, July fourteenth. We have two, uh, hearings on that agenda and, uh, commissioners can expect, can expect, um, to spend some time together on July fourteenth. Um, so please be prepared for that. And, uh, unless any want, does anyone have any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, I will then adjourn the meeting at twelve forty. Thank you, everyone, for attending, and we will see you next month. Bye-bye.
Bye. Thank you.